Good evening. Welcome to the Northampton City Council meeting of, what the hell is the date? Oh, August 17th, 2017. I'm City Council President Bill Dwight and I'll be presiding tonight. As is our usual custom, before we actually call the roll and determine we have a quorum and start an open meeting, we give the public an opportunity to speak on any topic. Constraining themselves to, any individual, please constrain yourself to three minutes or less. Three minutes isn't the goal, it's just an end point. And when you, when I call your name, please come up and state, restate your name and correct my pronunciation and tell us your address for the public record. The rules limiting commentary is basically, we ask you to respect the decorum of the chamber. Do not defame anyone. I've often said this, you don't, you can't defame others, you can defame us however, we're public figures. So you're, you're welcome to say nice things too, we, we have no problem with that, although it's rarely heard. And we, um, the, uh, and as, yeah, so we keep it under three minutes, don't defame anyone, no cussing. I think you get the general idea, so. And as I said, you're not constrained by topic, you can speak on anything. So first up, we have Daphne Stevens, please.
My name is Daphne Stevens and you probably can't see my green button, but I'm a member of the Green Party, which has long supported single payer, universal health care and preventive care for all. We believe that health care is a right, not a privilege. Our current health care system lets tens of thousands of people die each year by excluding them from adequate care while exorbitant costs are crippling our economy. The United States is the only industrialized nation in the world without a national health care system. Under a universal, comprehensive, national, single payer health care system, the administrative waste of private insurance corporations would be redirected to patient care. If the United States were to shift to a system of universal coverage and a single payer plan as in Canada and in many European countries, the savings in administrative costs would be more than enough to offset the cost of additional care. Expenses for businesses currently providing coverage would be reduced, while state and local governments would pay less because they would receive reimbursement for services provided to the previously uninsured and because public programs would cease to be the dumping ground for high-risk patients and those rejected by the HMOs when they became disabled and unemployed. In addition, people would gain the peace of mind in knowing that they have the health care they need. No longer would people have to worry about the prospect of financial ruin if they became seriously ill, are laid off of their jobs, or injured in an accident. The Green Party supports a wide range of health care services, including conventional medicine, as well as the teaching, funding, and practice of complementary, integrative, and licensed alternative health care approaches. I'm not seeing my—
Yeah, I'm sorry, you've got another 45 seconds.
Okay, I will also throw in that the environment is really important for health care. It includes the quality of air, water, and food, and the health of our workplaces, homes, and schools.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
This is my— Oh, this is yours, so it won't be—
It's gonna be mine, then, right?
Okay. So, normally we have a clock up there, we're, uh, we've jerry-rigged the council tonight and we're, because John Frye is here and he is sitting in for our normal, our regular administrative assistant who we went and made the interim city clerk, and John is taking over and we're just, so we don't have the clock, that's a long explanation, we don't have the clock. So try and get a sense of what three minutes is, all my eyebrows will go up when you've got like 25 seconds left or something like that, and, and I'll politely let you know if you're running over, how's that? Okay, Daniel Morata, please.
My name is Daniel Morata, my address is 117 South Street in Northampton. I am a physician and third-year resident in psychiatry. First, I wanted to thank the City Council for considering this resolution in support of Senate Bill 619, an act establishing Medicare for All in Massachusetts, and I want to urge the council to pass this resolution to build on the existing momentum that now exists on the national, state, and local level around the issue of health care reform. One might be distressed by recent efforts to repeal the ACA, but the flip side of this recent chaos is the opportunity for real reform. This is a consciousness-raising moment in which Americans are coming to see health care as a right, and which we as a whole are appreciating that we are putting more into the current health system than we are getting out of it. On the state level, we have the momentum of this existing piece of legislation that is co-sponsored by 55 members of the State House and Senate. On the local level, we have the Western Massachusetts towns of Colrain, Deerfield, Leiden, Leverett, and Plainfield that have already enacted resolutions this year in support of the Medicare for All bill. If Northampton adds its voice, Western Mass is sending a clear message to the State House that Massachusetts residents want a system that secures affordable and universal health care. While applying for, for medical school in 2008, I followed closely the passage of the Affordable Care Act, and was at that time that I first started to delve into the iniquities and inefficiencies of the current health care system. Now, as a physician, I am faced with these issues in practice, with the hurdles I have to jump over to provide care, and with the hurdles patients face to access care. To give an example, a few weeks ago, I am taking care of a nine-year-old boy with significant mental health issues who was urgently in need of a medication that is going to help him right away, a medication that is being delayed because of the authorization process required by his health insurance carrier. We're heading into the weekend without the medication and the boy's mother is worried that she is not going to be able to keep her son safe. Friday afternoon, I am on the phone with the insurance rep and the pharmacist trying to arrange approval for an emergency supply of this medication. What I want to highlight in this example is that everyone is trying to do the right thing, the insurance representative, the pharmacist, the patient's mother, and myself as the provider. We all wanted to get the medication he needs, but the problem was larger than our best intentions, we were serving a function in a dysfunctional system. In a Medicare for All system, we could avoid situations like this because the landscape of who approves and who pays for what would be much simplified. To paraphrase the President, "Health care is complex." Accessibility is not necessarily affordability and affordability is not necessarily quality. Adequate reform must address the mutual interplay of these three factors of access, cost, and quality, and a Medicare for All system would do just that. It would improve access by guaranteeing coverage, it would lower costs through the robust cost control mechanism of having a single payer negotiating the prices of medical procedures, devices, and pharmaceuticals, and it would improve quality by replacing a system in which people defer care for conditions that benefit from early diagnosis and treatment simply because they cannot afford it. A system that passes on to its people the crude calculus of choosing between their life and their livelihood is an immoral system. How long are we going to listen to arguments that the market will sort things out when every year health care costs continue to rise? How long are we going to endure short-term fixes at the expense of real-lasting reform? How long are we going to entertain the pernicious fiction of the consumer-driven health care system that falsely equates health care with goods traded on the market? Health care is not a commodity, it is a social service, it is a right, and to say it plainly, corporate profit has no place in the care of the sick. The current system that says otherwise has proven itself to be both financially unsustainable and morally objectionable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Margaret Miller, please. Margaret Miller?
Hi, my name is Margaret Miller, I'm a psychologist, oh, my address is 857 West Hampton Road in Florence. I'm a psychologist in private practice in Northampton and I am speaking to advocate for universal health care as a provider. First of all, I think that universal health care would eliminate an enormous amount of wasted time. Practitioners spend enormous amounts of time trying to understand and function within different insurance companies, different authorization procedures, different billing procedures, and if it's confusing for the patient, it's equally confusing to the practitioner, and it's an enormous waste of time. That time could be better spent providing ser, direct service to patients. Number two, I think that universal health care is a right, and that right now, I believe that the profit motive of private insurance companies as well as pharmaceutical companies is taking priority over the needs of patients. And there are men, there is an absolute inequality of access to services, and there are many patients that are not able to access services because their insurance company either doesn't cover the service, or their deductibles are so high that they cannot possibly pay for them. So it's become a system where the wealthy are able to access any services that they need while those who are less fortunate are not able to. And as a practitioner, I can't live with that kind of inequality of access to services. So I advocate for this universal health care and I urge the council to support it.
Thank you very much. Fran Volkman, please.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you so much for considering the—
Fran, I'm gonna interrupt you now—
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Fran Volkman, I live at 24 Crab Apple Lane here in Northampton at the Lathrop Community. And I want to thank you all for putting the Bill 67, 619, S 619, on your agenda as a resolution tonight. I think it's just so important right now. I want to give you a little personal, a little personal case study. My partner Joan had a shoulder that basically disintegrated, no rotator cuff left, and the pain got worse and worse and worse, and the use of the arm got worse and worse and worse, until she was literally pacing the floor at night in pain, and something had to be done, and a normal shoulder replacement wasn't gonna do it. And we finally got a kind of a high-fangled reverse shoulder replacement done in Boston. And it transformed her life. This was done in June, she's a new person. And I can tell you, it was all done with Medicare. So it's a system that sure does work. All done with Medicare. So that was my first take-home message from this. It also made me realize what it must be like to be all those people out there who have conditions that bad or worse than Joan's, who don't have that option. I don't know what they do, I don't know how they can do it. And it seems so terribly unfair in this country to have people in that situation. My second take-home message from our experience was that the price of this was unbelievable. We don't even have the final bill for the surgery, but two days in the hospital in Boston, $18,000. So here we have a system that works and a cost that's just off the charts. And we're at a time now when things are probably gonna get worse before they get better. It's totally unsustainable, and we have to get this thing to a different place fairly soon. I don't know if Bill 619 is the final version of what we should do, but it's sure a good start, and we need to get it out of committee, get it out of committee, get it to a place where it can have input and discussion, good ideas, and move it along. And that's why it's so important for people like you and cities like ours to urge the legislature to get this thing going so that we can come up with a solution to this problem that works for everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So just a heads up, everyone's run over, so if— If you feel like your point's been made, consider the fact that we've registered that and if you have a new point, please make that, that'd be great. Ed Ward, please.
Hi, my name is Edward Ward, I live at 368 Burt's Pit Road in Florence. And what's caught my eye about the health care stuff is the administrative costs, you see some figures about European countries and, and the US, and, and the administrative costs are so dramatically different. And I see it at home, my wife is a therapist with a private practice, and she spends 20% of her time, she estimates, on billing, just the billing part of administration. And it's, you know, 20 different companies, they all have different forms, and they seem to be very happy to send anything back if there's any, any minor trivial thing wrong with it. And she works with kids, you know, she, a whole bunch of, for a whole bunch of reasons, you know, messy divorces, physical abuse, sexual abuse, and if she didn't have that, you know, if she got some of that 20% of time she, she spends on administration back, she'd be working with more kids. And on the other side, you know, with the single payer, more kids would be, be able to get the care they need, and this would help us all, you know, for years down the road. So I just, I'm, I'm just supporting this Medicare for All and I'm, I'm really hopeful everybody here will.
Thank you very much. Mary Lou Bosley? Not even close, right? B's right, okay.
Hi, I'm Mary Lou Booley. I live at 51 and 1/2 Hatfield Street in Northampton, I'm with the Northampton Area League of Women Voters. And in 1987, the local Northampton League decided we need to look at health care, and the stories we've heard tonight were the stories we heard 30 years ago. The problems existed then, they still exist now. The League of Women Voters of the National, the National League in 1990 decided to study health care, and we were had a leg up on them because we'd already started. They undertook a two-year study of the funding and delivery of health care in the United States, and their position that they came up with was to promote a health care system for the United States that provides access to a basic level of quality care for all US residents, including behavioral health and controls health care costs. The position calls for a national insurance plan financed through general taxes, commonly known as the single payer approach. And that's basically what we learned back in those days. In 19, in 2016, at the National Convention of the League of Women Voters, the convention concurred with positions held by the two states in the United States that had already studied the single payer business, and they concurred that yes, the National League would support a single payer plan, and we, so we thank you, we hope you'll support the resolution on Medicare for All. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chris Florie, please.
My name is Chris Florie, I practiced primary care internal medicine in Northampton for 31 years, now I live in Williamsburg. It was painful to realize that the last 10 years of my practice, how poorly our health care system, which I had worked in all that time, was doing, how much time I was spending having to negotiate for my patients, the ins and outs of each different HMO, how my staff had to know the paperwork and the requirements of each different HMO. We needed to change that, it was not serving patients well even as we were working so hard to do so. I think we're at a unique moment in time for many reasons, but one of them is what's happened in health care the last month or two. I think with the threat of having health care removed from however many millions of people, there was a groundswell of opposition, and that had something to do with the Republican efforts to repeal the Affordable Care Act failing. I think there is a groundswell now in favor of improving our health care system in a way that's going to work and going to last, and I hope that all of you will think about what statement you will make here tonight to try to increase that groundswell. We can do much better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lucy Garbus?
I was gonna use my cellphone, but I'm, it's gonna make me too nervous, so hopefully I'll be under three minutes, hopefully I'll be under two minutes. My name is Lucy Garbus, I live at 11 Mountain Laurel Path in Florence, and I'm speaking tonight to urge the City Council to support this resolution to pass Medicaid for All. I had been working in a community health center for the past year and a half as a pediatric primary care nurse practitioner. I went there thinking that this was the last stop for poor children in our community, and that everyone would be served regardless of ability to pay. What I found there was very different. While it is usually easy for children in Massachusetts to get Medicaid, therefore thinking that children have access to care, there are often glitches in the system, and rarely are these the fault of the family. I was shocked to discover that our clinic is full of people whose only job it is to make sure that everyone's Medicaid is in working order before they can be seen for each visit. When there is a problem, the family is told by these care managers that they can be seen, but that they will be expected to pay. A few months ago, I saw a two-year-old who had a very severe cough. When they ran the mother's Medicaid card, they said it was not working. She was told that she could see me for the cough, but that she would be responsible for the $200 visit. Of course, she kept the appointment and the child received the needed medicine. Instead of scheduling a follow-up visit, which would have been the best care for this child, I called her to see if the child was improving. This way, she would not have to come in and risk increasing her bill. She was put on a payment plan for the $200. Another child was sent a bill for her first two newborn visits at our clinic because a mother's social worker forgot to fill out her part of the Medicaid paperwork. Mom is now trying to pay off the bill for the $375 to see me for this mistake. In addition, she received a bill from the hospital for the baby's first day of life that mom says she can't possibly afford to pay. These are only two examples of the children who actually make it all the way to my exam room. I do not know what is happening to the ones who choose not to come because they can't afford it or because they are worried about getting harassed, about payment plans. These children living in poverty are the most vulnerable members of our society, who are well-known to have lower quality of health, higher rates of mental health issues. The lack of universal health care and the complicated health insurance world puts up nearly impossible roadblocks for them to get timely and thorough care, leaving them at risk for serious physical and mental health issues that will go unaddressed until they reach a crisis point, sending them to the emergency room and sometimes into an inpatient psych hospital. In the words of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "Of all the forms of inequality, injustice in health care is the most shocking and inhumane." Medicare for All will be a great first step in the journey toward fighting this injustice. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty Nathan, Marty?
I'm Marty Nathan and I live at 24 Massasoit Street in Northampton. Thank you, council, thank you, Bill. I will be brief because most, most of the things that I wanted to say have already been said, but I want to talk about my particular experience in my over 40 years of practice in this country, the last 22 of which have been spent in, in the Pioneer Valley. I have, I have been a member of Physicians for a National Health Program for as long as I can remember, and I have always chosen to work in, for the underserved. Now, let me tell you what the underserved means in this country, it means people who don't have access to health insurance and are too poor to pay. It doesn't necessarily mean you live in a far rural area, although sometimes it can mean that because there are particular, there are demographics to it, but it means lack of access to insurance. I have spent all of those years either rationing health care myself or witnessing the self-rationing of health care by patients who know that the bill that they face is impossible to pay, even when they have insurance, that may be true. I have had, I have had patients who have gone, had horrible thyroid conditions, who when they lost their insurance, stopped seeing me for nine months at a time and came back in heart failure. I had one man who was having a heart attack and refused to go to the hospital because he just didn't have insurance. I have had so many people who just haven't come in until they were near death's door. And that is because of all the things that have been described so well by others, the lack of total coverage of people's health care, the spottiness of it, the forms that are impossible to fill out because they're so complex. We need Medicare for All, we have needed it for as long as I have been a doctor. We need it to prevent the bankruptcies that pull people out of their homes, make them homeless and sicker. We need it for us poor providers who would really much rather be helping people than filling out those goddamn forms. And I think that this is a wonderful city council in a wonderful city that I love and I know that just like the Democratic Party in the state of Massachusetts, you will support health, uh, universal health care, Medicare for All. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Lance?
Hi, thank you, I'm Susan Lance, I live at 74 Lyman Road, and I have to say, I have the great privilege of being over 65. And I have the humility to say that for some reason I thought the state of Massachusetts was okay with its medical policies because Obamacare was fashioned after what we had in Massachusetts. I hadn't paid really particular attention, in other words, because, and my health care was, is good because I happen to be on the blessed Medicare, single payer for all. But when I became aware, well, number one, that if we're ever gonna get a single payer in this country, probably the way to go is gonna be state by state, and by cracky, what's a better state than the state of Massachusetts to lead that cause? So, and where do we start? Locally. I bet you've all heard that before. So here we are, and we're starting at our local level, we're asking you to be a cog in the wheel to support this, to wake up our legislator, which, legisla, whatever that word is, that apparently this bill has been there for 20 years, and it's never gotten out of committee. That is just a disgrace, a total disgrace. So I think, you know, we, and this is one thing we can do, is to start here. I also want to say, I happen to have a 53-year-old son who has type 1 diabetes. I was shocked when he told me his insurance cost is seven, over $700 a month. What is gonna happen to him if pre-diagnosis things kick in? Scary. I have a friend here in Northampton that I just came to understand, she's on mass health. So to make ends meet, occasionally she has to get a temp job. She does that, she gets over the mass health line, she's kicked off insurance. She can't afford insurance on her own, it's way too expensive. She's in great pain, she needs a hip replacement, she can't schedule it— She's in great pain, she needs a hip replacement, she can't schedule it because she doesn't know whether she's gonna have mass health at that time. This is just no way that we should have to live, particularly in this civilized country. So thank you for your support of S-0619.
Thank you. So that's all. I have signed up. Does anyone else wish to speak at this time? Oh, yes, of course there are. We'll start with Claudia, and then we'll go to Mary, and I didn't see, and you're in the back. Okay, Claudia, you're first.
My lucky night, there's no clock.
Claudia, let me emphasize, there is a clock, it's just not visible, so.
So I expected there was going to be a crowd and a vigil outside. And actually, I came last week, and Edward was here.
Claudia, you need to state your name and address, and I'm sorry.
Claudia Alefko, 40 Valley Street. So I'm really glad this came in front of the Council, and I'm hoping that it will pass. But I'm here to just remind people that, like the old '60s sign, you know, war is not healthy for children and other living things, and much of our own healthcare is on our minds. There's an international context here that we're spending gazillions of dollars to destroy other people and their countries and their homes and the environment that we all have to live with, and their health is suffering. So it's not just cholera in Yemen, it's now cancer in Syria, it's been cancer in Iraq forever. If we weren't doing this, we would have plenty of money here to take care of our own needs. So I'm just saying, don't let's stop with this. Let's really be conscious of how the healthcare issue fits into other issues in the world. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mary, you able to get through?
Yes. My name is Mary Ford. I am a retiree living at 6 Massasoit Street in Ward 2A. I have some stories similar to what you've heard, true stories, and I worked, a lot of people don't know this, before being a government official, I worked in healthcare and afterwards, not as a provider, a clinical person, but as an outreach person, customer service and so on. And I literally had a case in eastern Franklin County at one point where a family called distraught, having just heard of the Community Health Center in Turner's Falls, and at this point, it was too late to help them. This was a guy with a factory job of good quality, like a supervisor. He had infection at home following surgery. Because of that, he couldn't go back to work. Because of that, he lost his job. Because of that, he lost his health insurance because the family chose to keep paying their mortgage. They called us when they were about to lose their mortgage. All of this broken health system. So that's my bad story. The good story is, hey, I've been on Medicare for several years now with a nice supplemental plan from the State's Group and Insurance Commission. And a lot of you know, I was diagnosed with celiac disease some years ago because I had a great nurse practitioner who said, "You gotta go to the GI person," referred me. I didn't have to worry about my insurance covering the GI person. Sure enough, told me I had a bad case of celiac, which is now much better with diet, but it does do some lasting damage. And what a lot of you never heard was, when I went to meet my college roommate in New York City to go to the Metropolitan Opera for the first and last time, I think, in my life, I had a fall, some splinters and a scrape on my shin, came home, and it very quickly developed into a MRSA-type of infection. Because I had what in healthcare is sometimes called a primary care home, a longstanding relationship with a medium-sized group of people. They knew my insurance, I knew my insurance was good. I was in there every other day for two weeks, and the wound itself was treated and I was given additional first aid instructions and custom medications were blended so that the infection could be localized instead of spreading throughout my body. That was kind of like Fran's story. It was a success story. But ask yourself this: what was the value added to the insurance company, to insurance as a commodity on a marketplace? It's a way of paying the bills. The fact that I knew my bills would be paid, that there was security in that payment mechanism, that was the value of the plan to me. Were there competing plans? That there were some. Nothing that would have offered a greater benefit to me, and that exposes not only what people not so fortunate have to go through in between health plans and so on, but it exposes.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I gave you the balance of Claudia's time, which I didn't know we were gonna have.
The idea that there's something positive in the U.S. for keeping health insurance under the free-market system. I'm less concerned, frankly, with the fact that for-profit people pursue health insurance expansion than with the fact that we're in a system where competition is bogus. It's not like my laptop or my car, where there are new innovations and worthwhile things to compare. Health insurance is strictly a way to make sure the doctors and nurses and hospitals get paid and that the patients don't have to sit around the kitchen table worrying about it. Having competition in that circumstance is useless, and our state reps and senators ought to tell the lobbyists so. Correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe our state senator supports this bill. Our state rep is now chairing the Finance Committee on Healthcare, so I hope everybody makes sure they convey their thinking to both of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm gonna be very brief. I'm Michelle Sarah, 68 Lake Street in Florence, Massachusetts. This is my passion. I am a chapter leader with Progressive Democrats of America, so represent Northampton in the 2nd Congressional District in Massachusetts, and I was the Hampshire County Coordinator for the Bernie Sanders campaign. So the single payer concept, if the humanity of the wonderful and very moving stories, not wonderful, but just, you know, really explained very well, if that doesn't really move you, I want to also just add that it's such a practical system. It's simplistic, it's efficient, it's pro-business, and so it's sustainable for the long term. So if you not want to really, you know, lean toward, be pulled by your heartstrings, it really is a very rational approach to healthcare. So it will save lives, and that's the most important thing, obviously, but it will save us trillions of dollars. And I just want to say that if you've listened to the propaganda about the long lines in Canada and not getting to, you know, have the doctor of your choice and all of that, it really is simply propaganda. So I hope you've all had an opportunity to really do some research and get the facts straight, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Good evening. I'll be very quick as well. My name is Hari Kumar. I live on 22 Mountain Laurel Path in Florence. I want to make two points. One is that there are a few different articles out in the New York Times and in The Nation about how, you know, is now the time to think about single payer or other systems, some skepticism about Medicare for All? What I'd like to say to that is, actually, now is the time to have that exact debate and to move this bill out of committee so that we, as a state, can have that debate openly. There are lots of different complexities to this, and the right place to have that discussion is openly in legislature, with our elected representatives actually getting all the information. The second point I want to make is in response to that thing about propaganda. We're gonna get hit with a lot of that, this idea that somehow Medicare for All or single payer is gonna lead to lots of inefficiencies and, you know, lack of choice and so on. I'd like to say, just personally, I just switched jobs, and just having to negotiate the different insurance plans and realizing that I have to now go through and figure out, can I see the doctor that I used to see before? Can my kid see the doctor that they used to see before? That problem is even more magnified under our current system than under Medicare for All. So just to push back on that propaganda and to urge you all to say, let's have this debate, let's actually get our legislators to move this bill out of committee. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Going once, going twice?
I'm Carolyn Toll Oppenheim. I live at 3 Montview Avenue, Northampton, and 99% of what I would have said has been said, so I will not repeat it. I have a family in Canada who came over as refugees from Eastern Europe in the late '60s, and they tried to get into this country first and were refused, and I won't go into the politics of that, but they luckily got into Canada. They tell me now that they are so grateful. You know, they were devastated, they were devastated at the time because they wanted to be with us and our relatives. They're in Montreal and Toronto, and they've had, now they're older, they're my generation, they have kids and grandkids. They've had a lot of medical problems, as older people do, and they have not had long lines, they have gotten appointments, things are efficient, and they don't go through the headaches and the fear that we do here. I have a person in my life who's been a single mother for the last few years, and family's been helping her, and she got her degree. She was on mass health. She just got her degree, and she's starting a job in a school system. Now she won't be able to get mass health, but what she's finding out is that the cost of the insurance is gonna make it hard to live on her teacher pay. So, you know, when we hear about former military people coming over here who are on food stamps, I recognize that there are lots of industries where people have jobs, and these are people, you know, we say, oh, they're corporations, but there's people with jobs in those corporations who will lose those jobs if we go to this system, and that will have to be worked out. It should be a serious debate and not just going on a moral high horse. People will get hurt. But in the long run, we have to work out a way that doesn't hurt people. So just throw my two cents in.
Thank you very much. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. I'm gonna ask the administrative assistant to call the roll, please.
Counselor Bidwell?
Here.
Counselor Carney?
Present.
Counselor Dwight?
Here.
Counselor Klein?
Here.
Counselor LeVarge?
Present.
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor Nash?
Here.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Here.
Okay. We have a quorum. In fact, everyone's here, and we will convene this meeting. Just for folks who want to remain, we have a scheduled right now for a poll petition, but then, following that, we could probably skip right to the resolution discussion, given the fact that I'm guessing pretty much everyone's here for that. So rather than make you sit in these very comfortable seats for a very long time, we'll bump that up the agenda. So if you want to stick around for that, I'd say about 10 more minutes. We have a public hearing regarding National Grid poll petition for Elm Street at St. John's Church, and this is in accordance with the provisions of Section 22, Chapter 166 of the Massachusetts General Laws. A public hearing will be held on the petition of National Grid to erect polls and wires along, under, or across Elm Street at St. John's Church location. I'll accept the motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion. Second.
All those in favor of opening the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any percentages? Okay. So we'll start with proponents. Is there a proponent here for the National Grid poll petition? Oh, come on. No?
Not in the hall.
Is there someone from National Grid here, sitting in the back, maybe?
They're out in the hall, maybe.
They're out in the hall? Could someone check to see if there's... Otherwise... Is there someone from National Grid back there?
No.
No.
They're always late, you know? Not in this setting. I move to continue the public hearing.
Motion's made to continue the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of continuing the public hearing to a later date to be determined, all say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any percentages? Boom. There goes that public hearing. So I will announce Item 17.363. This is another poll petition, but this is also received from National Grid, and this is concerning Art Street, and this is just an announcement of public hearing. Once again, in accordance with the provisions of Section 22, Chapter 166 of the Massachusetts General Laws, a public hearing will be held here at 212 Main Street, Northampton, 705, on September 7, 2017, on the petition from National Grid to erect polls and wires upon, along, under, or across Art Street in Florence. So mark your calendar, National Grid. So we'll bump up on the agenda, as I said. We'll move up to Item A under Resolutions. This is R-17.372. This is a resolution in support of Senate Bill 619, and it's an act establishing Medicare for All in Massachusetts. It'll be a first reading, and, excuse me... Oh, come on.
Do you want mine?
No. Hang on a second. I got bumped. When things go wrong... Waiting for the internet to work.
Do you want mine, Bill?
Yeah. It looks... Oh, this part can't open the page. Yeah, let's, can I have your print copy then? Mine just came up. Got it? Thank you, Lisa. All right. This is in the City Council, August 17th, the year 2017. It's upon the recommendation of Counsel Lisa F. Klein, Counsel William H. Dwight, and Counsel Maureen T. Carney. It's a resolution in support of Senate Bill 619, an act establishing Medicare for All in Massachusetts. And whereas access to affordable quality healthcare is a human right and a fundamental component of a decent and just society, and whereas the United States remains one of the few countries in the world that does not fully support that right by offering universal publicly-funded healthcare to its residents, and whereas the rapidly rising cost of health coverage and the shifting of healthcare costs to the insured in the form of co-pays, deductibles, and coinsurance force many Massachusetts residents to defer care for conditions that benefit from early diagnosis, treatment, and, excuse me, and whereas Massachusetts families face a high burden of healthcare costs relative to their income, and whereas the rising prices of prescription medications forces many to choose between filling in prescriptions and making ends meet, and whereas the City of Northampton projects a cost of more than $11 million for employees and retiree health insurance for FY 2018, representing 12.6% of the city's $93 million municipal budget, and projects those costs to rise 4% annually for the next three years, increasing the tax burden on local taxpayers, and whereas the continued rise in cost of employer-paid health insurance negatively affects our local economy by forcing businesses and municipalities to reduce... economy by forcing businesses and municipalities to reduce staffing levels for raises and hire part-time workers, and whereas healthcare providers must navigate a complex insurance landscape and in doing so divert substantial time and resources away from patient care, and whereas corporate profit should have no place in keeping our communities healthy or caring for the sick, and whereas the current healthcare system results in 31% of every healthcare dollar going to paperwork, CEO salaries, and profits, while Medicare covers 55 million residents and operates with just a 3% overhead, and whereas an alternative medical for all system that provides quality, affordable healthcare for all would remedy the unfairness and the unevenness and the disparity of the current healthcare system and advance the three goals of a rational system, increasing access, improving quality, and containing costs. And whereas Medicare for All or single payer healthcare is a system that would guarantee medical care, dental care, and eye care for all Massachusetts residents, regardless of income or employment, by simplifying the way we pay for healthcare, centralizing healthcare financing and cost control in a single public or quasi-public agency while keeping the delivery of care in private hands. And whereas the Massachusetts Legislature is currently considering an act establishing improved Medicare for All in Massachusetts, that's House Bill 2987 and Senate Bill 619, that is being cosponsored by 55 members of the House and Senate, including Representative Peter V. Koch, and if enacted, would save the city of Northampton millions of dollars in annual employee health insurance expenditures and eliminate the need to contribute to city retirees' health insurance. And whereas Massachusetts has always been a leader and an innovator in providing coverage for the quality healthcare for its people, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Northampton, Massachusetts, remains committed to providing high-quality healthcare to city employees and retirees and to making such healthcare available to all residents of Massachusetts, and be it further resolved that we support the improved Medicare for All bill currently in the Massachusetts Legislature, and be it further resolved that we commend and support State Representative Peter V. Kokot for being one of the petitioners of HB 2987. Be it further resolved that the administrative assistant to the City Council should cause a copy of this resolution to be sent to the Massachusetts Governor, Charles Baker, State Treasurer, Deborah B. Goldberg, Massachusetts Senate President Stanley C. Rosenberg, Massachusetts Speaker of the House, Robert A. DeLeo, and the original sponsors of 619 and HB 2987, Massachusetts Senator James B. Eldridge, Massachusetts State Representative Denise Garlick, the co-chairs of the Committee on Healthcare Financing, Massachusetts Senator James T. Welsh, and Massachusetts Representative Peter V. Kokot, and U.S. Representative Jim McGovern, U.S. Senator Elizabeth Warren, U.S. Senator Ed Markey, and Northampton Mayor David Narcoitz. I'll accept a motion. Motion's made and seconded. I'll speak to the author of the resolution. You can start.
Well, I'm proud to be a cosponsor of this resolution supporting State Senator Jamie Eldridge's Senate Bill 619, an act establishing Medicare for All in Massachusetts, and I'm grateful to Peter Kokot for being a petitioner on the bill. It calls for a universal publicly financed healthcare system in Massachusetts by establishing a Massachusetts healthcare trust as a single payer body responsible for the collection and disbursement of funds required to provide healthcare services to every resident of the Commonwealth. So now that we defeated, albeit by the slimmest of margins, the grotesquely misnamed Healthcare Freedom Act in Congress, it's time for us to be talking about what healthcare in our towns, our cities, and our country needs to look like. While some might say that we accomplished what we need to with Obama's Affordable Care Act, in truth, it has failed to cover a lot of people in this country and it hasn't had success in controlling rising healthcare costs. The corporate powers of the healthcare industry that in essence control healthcare in this country, if we're perfectly honest, and in Massachusetts, have created a healthcare system with hundreds of different insurance plans and people spoke to this very eloquently, different rules, different networks, all resulting in bureaucratic requirements that take precedence over actually taking care of people. Currently in the United States, we spend a third of our healthcare dollars on administration while other countries spend less than half of that and have better health outcomes. One study showed that many hospitals in this country have more billing agents than nurses and a recent Harvard study found that for every hour of direct patient care, physicians in the U.S. spend two hours on paperwork. And I heard somebody else say 20% of their time, but this study showed that it was 50%. When we begin to prioritize people's well-being over corporate profits, we can change the fact that the United States is the only industrialized nation, people spoke to this as well, thank you for all of your public comment, it was amazing, that we're the only industrialized nation that does not have some form of publicly funded, universal healthcare. Although they look different in different countries, these universal healthcare systems on the whole spend about half as much on healthcare per person, per year, as the United States, yet they have better health outcomes, as I mentioned, and they live longer than Americans. But what's most compelling to me about our need to support a universal publicly funded healthcare system is that healthcare is a fundamental human need and as such, it's a basic human right. In fact, it's recognized as such by the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. To my mind, this must compel us to place it on the forefront of our policy considerations and rise to the task of making accessible, quality healthcare a priority and a reality. Because healthcare is a fundamental need, it unites us as a humans across race, class, national origin, immigration status, and ethnicity. Access to healthcare is a matter of basic dignity, equity, and respect for human life that compels us to establish a healthcare system that is universal and publicly funded, a system that puts people's needs above corporate profit. I can't stress that enough. If we profess to hold truly democratic values, we have to ensure that it's not wealth or power that grants someone access to quality healthcare while others who have less status and wealth cannot access the healthcare they need to be healthy. I want to thank my cosponsors on the resolution, Counselor Carney and Counselor Dwight, and most especially, I'm really grateful to a number of you here in the audience, members of our community who sent out this clarion call for the need for universal publicly funded healthcare and who encouraged me to work with them on this resolution and in this endeavor. Judy Wish, Dan Marata, Nancy Tolanian from Amherst, Lindsay Sabadosa, Rachel Mayory, Debbie Pastrick-Klemmer, Deborah Levinson, and others working with organizations in the Valley on this issue. So thank you all for your commitment, thank you all for your public comment that really, I think, said everything that needed to be said, and thank you for your work on a more just society.
Counselor Carney?
Sure, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight and for speaking to this really important issue. Thank you, Counselor Klein, for drafting and for inviting me to cosponsor. And so much has already been said, I don't have a lot to add. The resolution itself speaks for itself and the comments that we heard were just, you know, right across the board. Hit the point, and one thing that I thought of was that this has been a longstanding, well, it was kind of a debate for a while and people referred to the fact that they've been dealing with this for the last 20, 30 years. And in my capacity as a labor official as well, it was kind of, it was not universally accepted. In fact, many unions, building trades unions especially, who negotiated these benefits for members, really had worked hard at getting these particular benefits and have put them in a, you know, at a competitive advantage vis-à-vis their other non-union contractors and other employers. So it became a difficult issue to convince, but in 2009, the AFL-CIO across the board did support the Medicare for All, a single payer healthcare system, and mostly that was because of the fundamental premise of healthcare being a right and not a privilege to be negotiated as a benefit. So there is universal backing of this right now in the labor movement as well, and so I just wanted to add that piece and thank, again, thank my colleagues for sponsoring this.
Any other comments and debate? Counselor LeBarge?
Yes. I'm very happy to see everybody here this evening. Mary Ford, Fran Volkman. If I can recall, 20 years ago, this is nothing new, nothing new to me at all. We spent, some of my residents, Freda Robinson, all night long, hand-doing and painting signs with our Democratic Party, out there holding signs 20 years ago for single payer health insurance. Everybody's in and nobody's out. There's no question about it. Is it time? Yes. 20 years ago, I've been fighting it and still fighting for this. The portability, changing jobs, you get divorced, you lose your job, you won't lose coverage. Uniform benefits for everyone, for everyone. Enhances prevention. There's no question about that. Choose your position. And I heard stories tonight that are absolutely true. I've had it happen on my ward as a counselor where people needed care with cancer and were so worried, very, very worried, if they were going to be able to have that money to pay for what they needed for a good quality of life. This has to be done. We have many representatives and senators who are all involved in this and it is time. Medicare for All, everybody, everybody. Single payer for all is a right and healthcare is a right, not a privilege. Medicare for All, there's no question about it. Everybody's in and nobody's out.
Anyone else? Counselor Bidwell?
Thank you. Yes, I'm happy to support this, especially tonight, because I believe that healthcare is an absolutely fundamental human right. I believe that the country, all, everyone here deserves and requires at some point, hopefully soon, universal coverage. I believe that Massachusetts has the opportunity yet again to play a critical leadership role in getting the nation to universal coverage. And I do believe too, that the numbers can work if we take some reasonable and long-overdue steps to demilitarize our federal budget. But I do have to offer a caution and it's, and it's in part, a similar caution has come in recent times, a column by Paul Krugerman, and that is that I think we need to be a little careful about conflating the goal of universal coverage with the way that we get there. And single payer is a way to get there, but I get a little bit worried about talk that it is the way to get there and that I get a little worried about single payer as a litmus test. I think the experience of nations around the world that have gotten to universal coverage and gotten close to it tell us that based on the facts and circumstances on the ground in different places, it takes different ways to get there. And I think, I think it's a long overdue opening of the conversation to get this world to get out of committee, to fully have the conversation that we need to have and for this state to be a leader in getting us to national, universal coverage. But I, I do have to offer the caution about getting too doctrinaire about there being one and only one way to get there when in fact, we want to get to universal coverage, but I think it's going to require some flexibility on all of our parts in finding the solution that actually gets us there. So, that's my comment.
Anyone else? And actually, to your point, Counselor Bidwell, I think it's absolutely right and one of the point, one of the more significant points is, of course, the discussion right now is in local chambers. It's on the internet. Houses of legislature, of the legislatures throughout the country, there's mumblings, there's no big push, there's no courageous charge to discuss this. So this is where this starts. We're just giving a little push and, you know, and let's recognize that we don't wield a lot of weight as far as it goes, but cumulatively, as other communities sign on, the hope is that the legislators will be swayed to pull this out of that dusty closet and then start to revisit and discuss this seriously, but also given the context of the, as Counselor Klein pointed out and others in testimony tonight, the abject failure and the absence of a genuine plan the Republicans offered for the ACA. Now, the thing, the most compelling reason for me for this is actually the cultural change. It makes a, we've all talked about it in the conversations, a significant cultural change that is for the good. I mean, the reason those other countries that actually have this type of universal healthcare benefit is because they do more prophylactic, prophylactic preventative medicine. We're a reactive medical system. You spend the bulk of your money dealing with issues that you had, that you postponed because principally, I'll use diabetes as a perfect example. In the UK, they're as fat as we are, they have the same rate of type 2 diabetes as we do, yet we die at a much higher rate because we're at the reactive stage and we're trying to deal with it, and particularly people who can't afford it, and that's where diabetes reaps its worst harvest. It also culturally changes the functional basis as listed in this resolution about how we conduct business, how businesses can actually predicate decisions not based on can they afford to sustain, keep their employees healthy and alive, but whether they can keep their businesses viable. The focus on that. The same thing with municipal governments. One of our biggest pressures is trying to accommodate the insurance for existing employees and retirees. Why we're, why we're haggling over that is absurd because in the meantime, there, those things should be a given and should be covered and can be covered easily. Also, as to the point about, you know, the propaganda issue, I mean, I've heard the propaganda for a long time. It's like having, walking around with a really horrible haircut and someone telling you, yeah, well, you should see what they're like in Canada. It's completely absurd. It's not, they're making up this kind of easily disprovable fantasy in order to support this kind of, and of course, we heard it when, when the ACA was first being proposed and the activists, the Tea Party activists in particular, who were opposing the establishment of the ACA, of course, there were going to be death panels. There are death panels now. There are death panels now. There are people whose ability to continue living is actually decided by their ability to afford it, their healthcare. That's a death panel. And people don't even get to testify at that. You got, you just don't get it. So, this, the hope in launching this is to spark the expanded and serious conversation about addressing a profound dysfunction that has a profound dilatory impact on us as a nation, politically, humanity, our humanity, our economy, I mean, every dimension, every aspect is touched by this. And it needs, at the very least, a serious conversation. So, thereby, I am hoping that people will join me in voting in favor of this resolution. Now what I'm going to do is I'm going to call for the vote, we'll call for a roll call, and if this passes, it passes in first reading. There will be a second reading at our meeting on September 7th, just so folks know, it's not a fait accompli, but the vote should probably give you some indication about the prospects for September 7th as well, so. Any other discussion, other points? John, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
That passes unanimously in first reading. You're invited to stick around for the rest of the meeting, where you can see your municipal government at work. Not quite as sexy what you just witnessed, but it's, well, for people who have no lives, it's compelling to watch, so. I'm going to wait for the room to clear for folks who want to leave so we can continue the meeting without interrupting.
You just described you, huh, Sam?
Twice as many people, but they all went to the civil disobedience training for the, to go to the commons.
So we're going to jump back on the agenda?
Oh, good!
Back on the agenda.
We could have had a lot. We could have had a lot.
At least I'm good for a song.
Alyssa, you were getting a high sign. Okay.
Exactly.
So back to the business at hand. This is recognition and one-minute announcements by counselors. Counselors, anyone have one-minute announcement or anything? Counselor Nash?
Where did it go? If somebody else says something.
The way this whole night's going. Does anyone have a one-minute announcement handy? No, it's on you, man.
I can't.
What's that?
Do I need to record the gist of these?
No, no. Just, yeah, no, 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 it's not necessary.
I'm ready now.
Okay.
So, on Sunday, August 20th, from 4:30 to 6:00 PM, is the Fourth Annual Ice Cream Social over at Historic Northampton. It's free and open to the public, featuring Harold's On the Move Ice Cream Trailer, featuring the Florence Community Band. And people are encouraged to bring their lawn chairs, come and hang out. There will be activities for children, and it goes without, and the sponsors are Historic Northampton, the Ward 3 Neighborhood Association, and Meadow City's Conservation Coalition. So show up, get some ice cream, it's a lot of fun.
Did you say the day or time again?
The day and time is Sunday, August 20th, from 4:30 to 6:00 PM.
It's this Sunday.
This Sunday.
Any other announcements? And the mayor's here, he was able to find a chair. You have any proclamations, communications, Your Honor?
No, you don't.
Okay. Well, we've done the first resolution. The next item is 17.360. This is a resolution supporting the culture of stability in the city of Northampton, and this is a second reading. I'll accept a motion, put it on the floor.
Second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion on this point? So it'll just be a voice vote. So all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so it's unanimous. Okay, next. Oh, good. Now we get to, we don't have a presentation scheduled for this section, so we will have presentations coming, but we're going to go, if you're watching tonight's meeting, it's very exciting because you're getting a three-for-one package. We're going to have three committees competing all in one. And first one, we're going to go to recess for the Committee on City Services. I pass figuratively the gavel to Counselor Carney, who chairs that committee.
Thank you, Counselor, and I will note that the meeting is called to order and ask the administrative assistant, do you have the role for this meeting?
Sorry.
And if not, while you're looking for that, I will just call the roll then. Counselor Labarge?
Present.
Counselor Bidwell?
Here.
And Counselor O'Donnell?
Here.
And I am Counselor Carney, as was noted. So I'll ask if there's any public comment before this City Services. And seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes of July 10th?
Who approves all those minutes?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have just the items referred to committee from July 13th. We had referred to us an appointment for the Arts Council of Ellen Augarten, and this would be for the term of July 2017 to July 2020, and was a reappointment. And Counselor?
Yes, I had a chance to speak with Ellen Augarten. She's a quite accomplished photographer. She's served several terms on the Arts Council before. By all accounts, she's an invaluable member. She is very pleased with the makeup of the council, with the good work of the council, with its coordination with other arts organizations, and I enthusiastically recommend that she be reappointed.
Is that a motion, then?
That would be a motion.
Second.
Yes.
Okay, moved and seconded for a positive recommendation on the appointment of Ellen Augarten. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And none opposed? That motion carries. And appointment to the Human Rights Commission of Lori Loisel. And Counselor O'Donnell?
Well, Ms. Loisel came before the last council meeting and discussed the resolution we just approved, so she's clearly a very active and formidable member of the Human Rights Commission. I'd like to see her back on, so I would move positive recommendation.
And a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, a positive recommendation for Lori Loisel to the Human Rights Commission to the full council. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And none opposed, abstentions? And for the Parks and Recreation Commission, we had a nomination of Karen Foster.
Yes, Karen Foster. She's a new appointment, and if you looked at her resume, it's unbelievable. Anyway, she originally moved to Northampton in 2004, then moved to a neighboring town in 2007. Then, when I bought my first house, that's when she bought it, my family and I just relocated back to Northampton in May, as my older son will start kindergarten this fall. And this is the community where we want to raise our kids, and that language was very valuable. I am excited for the opportunity to contribute to the city in any way that I can be helpful, and the Parks and Rec Commission seems like a natural fit. I've been the executive director of All Out Adventures, a Northampton-based nonprofit organization since 2007. We provide outdoor recreation programs to people with disabilities, to seniors and to veterans throughout Massachusetts. She believes in the physical, mental, and community-building potential of recreation. And I'm also interested in reducing barriers to participation in undeserved communities. I have a skill set that includes budgeting, administration, and programmatic oversight in addition to hands-on skill, experience professionally, and a wide variety of recreation opportunities. And she is just, she feels Northampton is a wonderful place to live, and she's so excited to raise her children here. And she feels that I can, I get that it takes all of us to keep a town or a city running well, and I look forward to the opportunity to give back, and I make a positive recommendation to full city.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to send the name Karen Foster with a positive recommendation to the full council. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that motion also carries. And is there any new business to come before this committee? Then I'll just note that we have a few more appointments. I'll be in touch just about taking care of those for the next meeting in September. And is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
To adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, so we come out of recess. And the first item is the consent agenda. I would ask that we remove item 17.343 because we were unable to hold a public hearing, so the approval for the poll petition would be out of order, so. Any other amendments or separations on this before I read what the consent agenda will be? Okay. We have, in the consent agenda, we have approve item 16.361. That's appointments based on the recommendations on the Committee of City Services, which you just witnessed, and that's, as you heard, Ellen Augarten of 253 Crescent Street here in Northampton, term beginning July 2017, expire in June 2020. It's a reappointment. On the Human Rights Commission, the Chair Lori Loisel, 46 Grant Avenue, Northampton, term to start June 2017, expire in June 2020, and also a reappointment. And then Parks and Recreation Commission Karen Foster of 155 Grove Street, Northampton, the term to start July 2017, expire in June 2020, and this is a new appointment, filling a vacancy. Also, we have item 17.364. This is to approve a secondhand dealer petition for the Mill River Music and Guitars. John Arenstein is the petitioner. Item 17.366, this is appointments to various committees for referral to the Committee on City Services. On the Arts Council, we have Melissa Lewis-Gentry of 292 and 1/2 South Street in Northampton, term starting August 2017, expire in June 2020. It's a new appointment, filling the expired term of Eric Olson. And also to the Board of Registriers, Daniel Polacek of 95 Jackson Street, Northampton. This is a term to start August 2017 to expire June 2020. This is a new appointment, filling the expired term of Sandra Helloel. On the Planning Board, Alan Verson of 508 Kennedy Road in Leeds, the term starts March 2015, expires June 2018. It's a reappointment. Interesting. Then we also have item 17.371. That's an appointment of Martha Lyon as historical commission representative to the Community Preservation Committee. That's also referral to City Services. And then also the approval of the minutes from July 13, 2017. Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Oh, look, it's time for another recess. And now we move down the neighborhood and go to Mr. Murphy's house, and Counselor Murphy will be presiding. Yes, yes. Counselor Murphy will be presiding over the Finance Committee, which will convene.
We're off to the magic finance kingdom here. I'm going to call the meeting to order, and I'll call a roll. Counselor Nash?
President.
Your president. Counselor Carney?
President.
Counselor Labarge?
President.
And I'm, of course, here, so we have a full house tonight. First item is to approve the minutes of the July 13th meeting. Do we have a motion? Second. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Financial orders. The first one is 17.368. This is an order to accept Lot 4 on Earl Street, Village Hill, for municipal or other purposes. Order that whereas Hospital Hill Development LLC has offered to donate Lot 4 at Village Hill South off Earl Street at the former Northampton State Hospital. The lot is 30,237 square feet, shown in Plan Book 221, page 81, and they're offering to Northampton, whereas the lot has potential for social service, economic development, solar photovoltaic, or other municipal uses. Therefore, order that the city of Northampton is authorized to acquire any fee easement and/or other interest in the above land. We have a motion, Finance?
So moved.
Second. And we have the mayor to talk about it.
Yes, good evening, counselors. The parcel in question, if you're at the stop sign on Earl Street and you're looking and you see Volt's Clark Associates, and then you see the corner of, you know, Earl and Grove there, there's a parcel that was part of the former state hospital that Mass Development acquired as part of their master development agreement, and it's a parcel that they have never marketed. It's sort of undersized, it doesn't have a lot of access, and they have no intention of marketing at this point. So they have offered to convey it to the city, and as the order points out, we don't have a clear end use for it at this point, but we have agreed to accept it, obviously with your approval, and it has some potential uses in the future. It may be the city may end up just conveying it to someone else or selling it to someone else, but we agreed to work with Mass Development to acquire the property. So that's what this order would allow us to do, would be able to accept it. Again, it's being conveyed to us for no consideration.
Questions? No questions?
Yes.
Counselor?
Yes, Mayor. It says 30,237 square feet, so how much is that? How many acres?
Three quarters.
What is it, about three quarters or so?
Yeah, three quarters of the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Any other questions, math or otherwise? Hearing none, and all in favor of positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Again, that's in Finance. The next is 17, oh no, is 17.369, and that is an order to authorize the purchase of 55 acres on East Hampton Road, Route 10, and Old Wilson Road for conservation, municipal and other purposes. Order that whereas the Open Space and Recreation Plan 2011 to 18 recommends expanding open space near both the Arcadia Wildlife Sanctuary and the former Northampton State Hospital, and collaborating with Mass Autobahn, and whereas the owners of land along East Hampton and Old Wilson Roads have agreed to sell particularly 2.73 acres for $20,000, now are formerly owned by Judith O'Brien, 47.41 acres for $150,000, now are formerly owned by Wilson Realty, and five acres for no monetary consideration, also owned by Wilson Realty. Whereas a five-acre portion of the property is appropriate for economic development, solar photovoltaic, or other municipal uses, whereas the remainder of the land is available as valuable wildlife and plant habitat linkage between Arcadia Wildlife Sanctuary and the Connecticut River Floodplain with Rocky Hill Greenway and the former Northampton State Hospital and other upland areas. Whereas the Mass Autobahn Society has committed to fund $81,000 for the purchase price and to hold the necessary conservation restrictions at no cost to the city, and whereas the remainder of the funding will come from the Community Preservation Act, other grants, community contributions, and other city appropriations, order that the mayor is authorized to accept a deed or deeds to the above referenced five acres for economic development, solar photovoltaic, or other municipal uses. Further, the Conservation Commission is authorized to purchase or otherwise acquire for conservation and passive recreation purposes provided in Mass General Law, Chapter 40, subsection HC, any fee easement conservation restriction as defined in MGL, Chapter 184, subsection 31, or any interest in the remainder of the above referenced land and any immediately adjoining land with such related restrictions and agreements as the city determines are agreeable. Further, the City Council hereby accepts such conservation restrictions. Further, the Conservation Commission is authorized to grant conservation restrictions on any land so acquired. Do we have a motion in Finance? Second.
Second.
I'm actually going to, I'll ask Mr. Fiden to come up, and because this is a series of different things going on, I want to have him explain it, and especially the land conservation piece of it.
So can you package, I don't know if you can get it back, John, on the screen. You've authorized us to purchase the Rocky Hill Greenway over the last few years, and so we now have a large conservation area that's there. That area butts up against the state hospital, open spaceland, and it's sort of across Route 10 from Mass Autobahn's property. So this is a key linkage between the two parcels, so a lot of wildlife opportunities. It's currently a zone business park, but between very steep slopes and vernal pools, it's not really developable, so we're never going to see a business park. No sewer. And no sewer. So the plan is for most of the property to come to conservation, the land is undevelopable. There's a five-acre parcel, and the reason the resolution, the order is so open-ended is we don't know exactly what use it could be. It's a very steep access through Route 10, so it's difficult to get to, but then there's a flat plateau on it. And so the idea is basically to land bait it to see what the opportunities are. Frankly, it's, if the property to the south gets developed, then that five acres might be very developable. If the property to the south doesn't get developed, it's probably not, because the parcel to the south would have to build a driveway access that we could share, they would have to build sewer line to hook into East Hampton, and then some of the five acres is usable. So we would sort of hold the five acres. If nothing ever came up, we probably could use it for solar photovoltaics, and otherwise, you know, would have to come before you all, we could look at other uses for it. So the rest of the land would be preserved. Mass Autobahn is our partner on this. They'd be paying in essence 50% of the purchase price, except for that five acres, which would be up to us, and they'd be holding the conservation restriction, which usually we have to pay about $20,000 for stewardship fee for someone else to help hold it. So it's $81,000 plus saved, $20,000.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes, Wayne. On the mapping, it shows the Pine Grove Golf Course. Now, the Pine Grove Golf Course is on Wilson Road, correct? So where does that affect this?
So it's sort of the height of the land. If you come in off of Route 10, or I'm sorry, Route 5, and climb up, you come off Route 10 and climb up, there's sort of a high point, and the land that drains down to East Hampton Road is the land we'd be acquiring. The land that's sort of flat and drains down to Old Wilson Road, that's the land that's the owner's part of the golf course.
The conservation restriction, under whose EJIS?
So that'd be Mass Autobahn Society.
Mass Autobahn Society.
We grant it to them.
Counselor Klein?
I'm just curious about the, this is on the other side of Route 10 from Arcadia, right?
That's correct. That's correct.
And so if we're talking about wildlife, is there, are we kind of increasing any issues with animals crossing the road and creating hazards and risking their lives? And, I mean, how is that, how does that figure in when you think about kind of expanding a parcel?
Right. So, I mean, he's absolutely right. I'm sure there are some animal kills along the road. They're already crossing right now. And obviously, what we're doing is protecting more of that corridor that's, yes, there are going to be some, you know, auto strikes, so animals there. But the, I mean, the animals are, these are animals that want to cross, so they're going to cross anyway. So having as wide a corridor as possible makes it safer. On the east side of the road, it's a very thin parcel you see that the city already owns, that's sort of part of the buffer between Mass Autobahn and East Hampton Road. And there's two additional parcels there. So you're making it, you're preserving more of the corridor, but you're absolutely right, that's an issue.
Is there a way to create some kind of barrier, or is that done to keep animals from kind of getting into the roadway, going into the roadway?
There are, I mean, there are incredibly expensive ways, are bridges and tunnels. Certainly, people who put fences up channel, you know, if there was one spot was particularly good line of sight, people do put up fences to sort of channel animals in that direction. You know, the biggest strike out there, auto strike, is probably deer, and deer can jump a pretty high fence. So it's going to be hard to stop that.
Council Bidwell?
I know this is the area of the city where there's been talk about the possibility of a new business park down the road. It's always been highly problematic because of sewer and divided ownership and slope and everything. Would this officially put that to rest? Any talk of a business park?
It would. So what we did, what you all did, we recommended a few years ago, is we looked carefully at this area, and we made some changes. So the Raymond property, which is just south of this, used to be zoned business park. As you said, one of the challenges is land assembly. So you all rezoned that from business park to office, or to general industrial. And you rezoned what's now Sunnyside from whatever, from residential district to, I'm not even sure what it is now. So they do, so those are the areas that's developable. We will be coming back to, you're not obligated to approve this, to rezon the five acres to match the Raymond property. So that's the, that's the development corridor which we think is realist.
Raymond to the, to the south here?
That's correct. So, yeah, so really what's developable out there realistically is five acres of Raymond, seven acres of Raymond, and five acres of this parcel. The only, I mean, even going back 20 some odd years when this is zoned business park, the only way it was really realistic was, first of all, major grants to pay for infrastructure, but also a multi-story building. Imagine what you see in California, where someone's willing to build a five-story office building, buried in a hillside. That's not the market we see. The market here is one- and two-story buildings on the left side, just the gap we drive. And so it just doesn't really work for this site.
Right.
And even as it is, I mean, we may come before you. We're working with Raymond to think about other, other opportunities to, because that property's been on the market now for 15 years. Are there other rezonings that make sense to get that developed? That one, we definitely don't want for open space. We want it developed for some economic developments.
Council LeBarge, did you have another question?
No, I didn't.
Anybody over here have a question?
I actually have a question. And it's, we talked about this when we did the, whatever we call this, the swamp off Burt's Pit Road that we took, we cut off some building. But these, these properties that we're taking are tax valued at pretty close to $830,000 and generate pretty close to $14,000 year in property taxes. Now, the good news is that won't go away. The bad news is the rest of us split it up and pay for it. And that's like $14,000 every year forever. So we're starting to not take back land and land that is undevelopable and land that, you know, really doesn't have an impact on the tax base. And we're starting to shift, every time we do one of these, we shift the burden of the taxes that were supplied by these pieces of property to the remainder of the tax base. And, you know, we've got most of the land that's really truly undevelopable. So now we're starting to nibble away at things that, that raise the tax burden of the remaining property taxpayers. Is there any way to address that? I know at the Great Swamp, we created some building sites to kind of offset it.
Right.
Here, you know, what are we doing to recoup the 14 grand so it doesn't land on everybody else?
So I think there's two answers to that. The first is, everything that is absolutely true theoretically. But if the owner of that property came before the assessors tomorrow and shared the assessment that we've done and they've now done, the reason they're willing to sell it to us at such a low price is that land isn't really developable. So it's over-assessed at that, at this point. So they really could come back in tomorrow and say, you know, we've marketed this for 10 years, and the highest investor offer we had was for $150,000 to sell the property. And that's probably what it's worth for doing it. They haven't done that as part of this deal, frankly, because I suspect they're going to try to get a tax deduction for difference in what we pay and what it shows on our books. But I don't think it has that value there. So they could lower it. And then, as you say, similar Burt's Pit Road, that's why we're carving out that five acres of land. We would very much like the five acres to get developed. I don't think, and I can't speak for you or the mayor, I don't think we want that five acres to maximize city revenue when we sell that lot. We'd love to find somebody who wants to create a building that pays taxes and jobs. So if there's development value, we will recapture in that five acres.
So, but the money still gets shifted because they were paying the taxes?
It gets shifted because they were paying the taxes, but it'll get equally shifted if tomorrow they file an abatement.
If they got an abatement. So. Any other questions? Councilor?
Well, to Council Murphy's point, is there any such animal, or could there be? When you put land into conservation, it goes tax-free essentially. But could you have, could you have a mechanism, you know, sometime in the, in the magical future where the tax is somehow phased out over a period of time? You know, so you still provide an incentive to people to put things into conservation, but it strikes kind of a balance.
So what we do quite regularly, and you all approve these, is when property is in working land, someone's actively keeping it in forestry or agriculture, our goal is generally not to buy those properties, to keep them as open space, and we just buy a restriction on them. And that's in essence what that does. That means we're lowering the taxes to its current use value. So it's in essence the same as if a person went to Chapter 61. So if, this doesn't work in this property, because this is sort of a junk forest left out. This site was clear-cut when the interstate was built, and they took borrow-out to build the interstate. So it's a low-grade forest. But there's other places in the city where people are either farming it, or they're keeping it as in essence a tree farm. And that's exactly what we try to do, is we keep it in private hands. We still get not development value taxes, but some taxes, I think sort of the way you're describing it. This doesn't really have that kind of value that's out there.
Yes. I guess I was kind of just like using my imagination, like that taught me in kindergarten. So, yeah. No, I realize you probably can't do that, but just what Council Murphy brought up seemed interesting to me.
Any other questions? Then, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
And I'm going to oppose. Next thing we have is an order to pay a prior year bill. This is 17373. Be it ordered that the city council authorizes the payment of prior fiscal year bills. This is from 2017, related to the Fire and Rescue Department. One is for computer keyboards for $59.98, and one for two swivel-back stools for $139.98. And these appear to be paid to amazon.com. Do we have a motion in finance?
Second.
Second. Any questions for the mayor on this one?
They're bills that were from the prior fiscal year.
No questions? All in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. The next is 17374. This is to accept a $4,000 donation to purchase and install some benches. Order that the City of North Hampton, the city council gratefully accepts a donation of $4,000 from the Florence Civic and Business Association for the purchase and installation of three benches, and the donation of three concrete bench pads from Look Park valued at $450 as gifts to the City of North Hampton for the Trinity Road Park. Florence importance, Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53. Do we have a motion in finance?
Take a motion.
Second. All right. Any comment from the mayor on this one?
Just that the city's been collaborating with the Florence Business and Civic Association for several years to remodel that park, built a new fountain, and so now we're working with them on a sort of a final landscaping. So they've graciously donated, along with Look Park, these benches. So it's fairly straight.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor of positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And now it's time for the ever-patient Susan Wright to give us our final quarterly financial report from last year.
So I'll get the copy of the financials in your packet. Okay. So this is a report of the fourth quarter, which would be the ending quarter of FY17. So it's kind of, this is not completely finalized. Our independent auditors, Tom Scanlon is here doing the audit, and there are always some audit adjustments. But in general, this sums up the year. Everything in all of the general fund and the enterprise funds, there's nothing remarkable. All of our projections seem to come in pretty much where we thought they would, and there was some healthy turnbacks in salaries, particularly whenever there's a vacancy, there's salary money turned back. So I'll start first with the general fund. The revenues for the general fund ended the year with a surplus of $1,719,407. Last year in fiscal 16, we ended with 1.4 million, so it's slightly up. This is where we generate the free cash that is used to do a lot of the capital plan. Some of the areas that had more came in higher than was originally estimated. We had about $50,000 more in tax titles that were paid. So these are properties that were in tax title, and they finally came to, either they sold or they finally paid back their back taxes. Ambulance revenues were up a lot over prior years. Last year, ambulance revenues were approximately 1.6 million, and this year, they were almost 1.9 million. So it was almost two, it was $270,000 more than last year in ambulance revenues. Part of that is we have switched billing services. According to John Garibby, that billing service has done a better job than the prior one. But also the call volume is up. So there's, there's two reasons for that. The rest of the revenues in the general fund performed as expected. We did have one area that we did see a drop in, which was Medicaid reimbursement for the schools. And that's because the rules surrounding school reimbursement for Medicaid services are changing. And so things that had formerly been eligible are no longer eligible. So this is an area that when I work on setting the tax rate for 2018, I'll probably reduce that estimate that we put in the budget for 18. But overall, revenues were 102% of our estimates. So the 1.7 million, although it sounds like a lot, is actually only 2% above what we anticipated. And we like to try to somewhat underestimate revenues because you never know what's going to happen with state aid and other areas. So this is good financial practice. As far as the general fund, this, the statement that you have does not include the two school departments. Both school departments fully expend their appropriation. They do not turn money back to the city, so theirs are zero. So I didn't include their financials in this. But the city, all the general fund, which would be all the city's departments, turned back $1.9 million. The general fund spent 97%. So again, it sounds like a big number, but it's basically 3% surplus. The bulk of that was through salaries from vacant positions. And there's really nothing to point out there. I will say, though, the legal services budget came in the lowest it has been in six years. So that was good. It was only $170,000. So we returned 105 of that budget back to the general fund, which was good. Other, if you look through this, some of the Fire and the Police Department, you'll see, have returned some large amounts. But of course, vacancies in those positions take a while to fill, and that's why sometimes there's quite a bit of PS turned back. So overall, we returned to the general fund for OM and PS about $200,000 less than the year before. So both of those would be good numbers that should show up when we get free cash certified in the fall. Now, in terms of the general, the enterprise funds, there's really nothing to talk about there. All of the revenues came in as expected. The sewer revenue came in about $62,000 more than was anticipated, which was a little under 1%. Water revenue came in a little higher, about 4% more than we anticipated. Stormwater revenue came in at 99.2. So it came in just about $15,000 under what we had estimated. And solid waste came in about where we estimated, about 3% more. So overall, the revenues are on track. And again, with the enterprise funds, the only trend that I would note in a comparison to last year is that all of the enterprise funds actually spent, more fully expended their funds this year than they did the prior year. And I would attribute that to tighter management at the DBW. So. So do you have any questions about any of these?
Any questions? Any questions? Councilor?
I have a little question. I see that there's 2,200 revenue from reimbursement from the five colleges for the PVTA. And I'm just curious, with all of the stuff in the news about the cutting of the budget of the PVTA, I'm wondering, with that revenue, is there, has that, can that be applied in some way to expand routes, continue routes between North Hampton and the five colleges?
That reimbursement is a general fund revenue, and it's basically the five colleges reimbursement to the city for running additional routes, I believe.
Yeah. So the PVTA has agreements with all the member communities, with the five colleges. And basically, the five colleges say, we want you to add extra service in Amherst, or we want you to add extra service in North Hampton, wherever it is. And then they pay to, because we actually get, anytime there's a transit authority service in a community, we're assessed. It's assessed off of our cherry sheet. So they make a, they make a donation to offset that. So, you know, the routes that we're talking about, what we're talking about here is for FY17. Going forward into FY18, I know that PVTA is currently in discussions with the five colleges about those agreements and whether five colleges would be wanting to contribute more, say, for example. But there's no, there's no surplus or anything left over. This is actually just what they paid to run the routes for FY17. The changes are happening, actually, starting right now in FY18. So, yeah, that's, that's sort of how it works.
Right. And we estimated that we would get $69,000 from the five colleges, and we ended up with 71,222, so about 2,000 higher.
That, those 2% and 3% above estimate buffers, you feeling good about that? Obviously, better than anything that's below, but...
Right. I mean, you don't want, you don't want it to be, you don't want it to be large, because then you would have over-budgeted. So, you know, I think, I think we budget accurately. We fully budget for every position in the city. So I anticipate a surplus every year, at least in salaries, because we budget for every position. We don't say, oh, we normally have a 90, you know, 5% vacancy rate, so we're going to budget less. We budget for every position in the city. So, and it takes a while to fill. So it's, it's good. You want, you know, rule of thumb is you want to try to generate up to 5% in turnbacks, because that's what's going to give you the free cash that you need to do, you know, to have as a reserve.
To her point about public safety, we just had, I think, three officers leave to go to the state police. So that means we're not...
They were poached, by the way.
Yeah. But, you know, so those will be fully budgeted positions that will now... Yeah. But, you know, so those will be fully budgeted positions that will now be vacant for two, three, four, five, six months. And that happens throughout the year. It happens with the fire department. I've been having a lot of retirements in the fire department. So you have people that are, you know, forty-year members who retire, and then we hire a brand-new one. So then there's salary savings there. So...
And that's why it doesn't make sense sometimes to just look at, say, in public safety, the overtime budget, because the overtime budget could be large because of vacancies, but then there's corresponding, you know, savings and salary line items.
It's never represented on paper, other than a turnback.
Right. Right.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yeah, Susan, I looked at the reports briefly. Sorry, I don't have it in front of me. I didn't look at the hotel and meals. I'm just curious what trends you're seeing on those.
They're, they're about the same as they were last year. Hotel motel was within a half a percent of last year's revenue, and meals was down a little bit, about three percent from last year. But overall, together, they were within twenty thousand of the prior year. So. And some of that can be timing, just the payments that come from the state.
Any other questions on the report? And thank you. And that was the last thing on finances' agenda. So is there any unexpected business that anyone has? Hearing none, then a motion to adjourn. Shall I take it? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we're coming back out of recess, and what the hell, since we've got a thing going on with recesses, let's take a brief recess. So stretch your legs or whatever that you do during the recess. We're going to recess for eight and two-thirds minutes.
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds minutes, that's forty seconds.
And we're back. We're coming out of recess and get back to the order business. Now that we've come out of finance, the first order is, of course, a financial order, item 17.373. This is an order authorized for the payment of a prior year bill. I'll accept a motion.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. And if I can ask councilors, when they move things to do it loud enough so that John can keep a pace of this, Pam got to, Pam could get to the point where she could sense who was making the motion, but for John's benefit, I think, just speak your motion loud enough and then your second loud enough and...
We should get paddles.
I'm considering, yes, paddles, that would be fun. So, all right, the motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? This will require a roll call, John, so...
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
All right, that passes in first reading. Next item is 17.374. This is an order to accept the donation of $4,000 for the purchase and installation of benches. This is the first reading. Is there a motion? What's that?
Second.
Very much. Counselor LaBarge made the motion. Counselor Shara seconded it. Any discussion? All right, John, roll call, please.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
All right, that passes in first reading. Now, we come up to orders, and of course, this one, actually, the first item is going to be, involve a discussion and presentation from Mr. Fiden, and the item number is 17.354. And this is an order to endorse the Walk Bike Northampton Citywide Pedestrian and Bicycle Comprehensive Plan from 2017. This will be the first reading, and let me read you the order. This is, okay, this is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narco. It's the Planning Board, Transportation, Parking Commission, and Planning and Sustainability. This is an order to endorse the Walk Bike Northampton Citywide Pedestrian and Bicycle Comprehensive Plan. And ordered that, whereas the city commission all the planning plus designed to write the Walk Bike Northampton Citywide Pedestrian and Bicycle Comprehensive Plan 2017 with extensive community participation, hearings and workshops, and whereas the plan provides a comprehensive examination of making bicycling and walking safe and desirable on all surface streets, and helps the city plan for future improvements in policies. And whereas on January 12, 2017, the Planning Board adopted the Walk Bike Northampton as an element in the city comprehensive plan. And whereas on March 21, 2017, the Transportation and Parking Commission endorsed the Walk Bike Northampton and recommended the city council also endorse the plan. And whereas the city council endorsement does not imply agreement with every single recommendation, but it is an endorsement of the process and priority for making walking and biking and bicycling safer. An order that the city council endorses, Walk Bike Northampton Citywide Pedestrian and Bicycle Comprehensive Plan 2017. Now, I'll accept a motion.
Second.
Counselor LaBarge and Counselor Bidwell seconded it. Okay, discussion, or actually, why don't we just cut to the chase and have Wayne give his presentation?
Thank you. And I'll add this one before the committee on community resources, who voted in favor of recommending you adopt this unanimously at their July meeting. So, I'll try to run through this quickly. You have a paper copy of this presentation as well as this up there. So, you all know that we have the comprehensive plan, which was adopted about nine and a half years ago. We've begun looking at the plan, figuring that after 10 years, we should come back and revise the plan. So, next January, we start, we hope to kick off a public process of adopting the plan. In the meantime, we went through, you all remember, we went before the STAR Communities, which is this nationwide assessment of how sustainable are we? So, we went through the STAR Community Process. We were the top-ranked community in the country. It's been through the process of the 40 communities who've done it. But we use that process to look at our comprehensive plan, of here what was strong and what was weak, or the areas we need to focus on. And there were two things that came out of the process we want to focus on. Pedestrian and bicycle access, so that's the reason we did this plan, and then a climate change element, and such's the reason the mayor funded, you all approved, some money and capital. So, you'll be seeing the climate change part coming before you later. So, that's why, so this is now a standalone plan, although we hope to incorporate this in the comprehensive plan when it comes back before you. So, I just want to go through quickly and give some background on this process. So, you know, it's funny, having been here forever, you notice that sort of a paradigm shift, a sea change sneaks up on you. So, when I was hired for the city, before most of you were born, the city had just started the redesign of King Street, or just started implementing redesign of King Street. And King Street was redone without a single pedestrian signal on the entire street, except for on Main Street, the Main Street intersection. We would never do that now. So, it's, so, you know, these things, we don't notice how much we've evolved over the years, but what you all accept is, of course, we put pedestrian crossings, and of course, we focus on pedestrians. Wasn't really done as recently as 1987. And if you imagine going back to the 70s and 60s and 50s, there was sort of a 30-year period where very little was done for bicycles and pedestrians. For the last 20 years, the city has done an enormous amount. Some people talk about, we still have one fatality a year from either bicyclists or pedestrians, on the average. You've got to realize that there's 30 years of not only doing nothing, but doing wrong things, that we've been making up for 20 or 30 years, but just, it's hard to do that. So, this is sort of the next step in the process. So, this is just sort of, it was interesting for me, looking through this process of history. We've actually been a leader in a lot of ways. I mean, even that period where we didn't put pedestrian signals on King Street, we put concrete sidewalks the entire length of King Street up to Damon Road. Lots, I mean, I was here, it was as little as 10 years ago, when the Hadley Selectman said, "We will not allow new sidewalks on Route 9 going through Hadley. We don't think people should be walking there." So, we were 40 years ahead of that, but, you know, there's still a lot of catch-up to do. So, this is sort of a list of things here. Part of the story that I tell is, when that paradigm started changing, when we started thinking about pedestrians, it was at Stop &amp; Shop. So, Stop &amp; Shop was building a gas station there, and the gas station paid us some traffic mitigation, and we got two things. We had a bike path through Stop &amp; Shop, and they agreed to pay for the signal, the pedestrian signal, and there was no signal before. But we didn't have enough money, and we went after the community and did community fundraising for pedestrian phase at Stop &amp; Shop. The reason that stands with me is, this is about as unsexy a thing as you can imagine, right? You don't have bake sales, so we can hire an engineer to design a traffic signal. But in fact, we raised, I think it was $10,000, and this is 15 years ago, and $10,000 was real money. And that was sort of a clear message from the community that we wanted to do a lot. There was, you know, a mayor's committee on safe streets, and that's in some ways how our current mayor got sort of a lot of his early political steps, is sort of building that constituency toward safety. You all have been involved, I don't want to preach to the choir, but at each step, we're sort of moving along the process, and I think it's important to keep doing it. We, as a city, have done an enormous amount of really good things. We're in some ways not trying to change the things we do, but try to formalize it, have a clear set of rules that we all know. So, we in 2005 adopted, we being you and the mayor, adopted a series of complete street policies, and the 2008 plan, we did a complete streets policy, a formalized complete streets policy. Last year, you all adopted a complete streets ordinance. We're one of the few cities in the Commonwealth that has an ordinance, which has a lot of teeth to say, "We really mean all this stuff." And we're now used as an example. You know, Federal Highway just asked me to take part in a webinar last week, presenting on how do you do crosswalk safety. So, we and two or three other towns around the country, we're sort of the step, you know, the stories of what we're doing. So, we're doing lots of great things in the process. Sorry, this slide's a little bit washed out, but just sort of walking you through the steps. So, you still see some of these things today. We do what's called tactical organization, community demonstration projects. So, things like the parklet in front of City Hall, or the Amber Lane Parklet, or the demonstration, which washed out here, is the demonstration project that we did last year, where we narrowed Main Street for a day on a Saturday to see how it could work. All those things are really good, is sort of getting people to visualize what you all see, how it is we can make streets safer in different ways. And then we do a lot of things, again, these you all know, but if you went to 300 towns in Massachusetts out of 352, you'd find that where the numbers, you'd find that most don't do this. So, I want to walk you through a few of the things we do quickly. We used to say, and most communities do this, that a driveway is owned by the cars. So, pedestrians should stop at the driveway. We've changed our rules about six or seven years ago, to say, "No, we want the sidewalk to cross the driveway. If the sidewalk's concrete, we want it to be concrete where it crosses the driveway. If the sidewalk is six inches higher than the road, we want the driveway crossing to be six inches higher." And it sends a clear message that the pedestrian owns the sidewalk, they should watch for cars and not get killed. Pedestrians own it, and cars should yield to them. And that's really an important part of the culture, that we're not asking pedestrians to drop down six inches at every sidewalk, we're not changing the materials, it's really part of pedestrians. Likewise, roadway crossings, thinking about the materials, DPW has adopted a new zebra standard for sidewalks, maybe eight years ago. They've widened that standard, they've had advanced warning, so we're focused on making them more and more visible. They're slowly retrofitting crosswalks as we go through, so thinking about how to make those things really visible. Thinking about road diets, so you can think, you know, on the bottom right, you see a picture of Prospect Street before. Prospect Street looked like a highway speed, and so you drive down Prospect Street at 45 miles an hour, so of course, the police will get a lot of calls, then have to put a police officer out there to enforce the speed limit. DPW then added striped parking and a bike lane. Now, that's great for bicycles, but it's not the important story in Prospect Street bike lane. It's about narrowing the traveled lane, which means cars drive slower. If bicycles use the bike lane, it's great, but if no bicycle ever use the bike lane, it's still really important. So, we're doing all these things together. The part that I find a little bit concerning sometimes, when I go before Transportation and Parking Commission, is I hear neighbors say, "Oh, we know that speed bumps work on Jackson Street, we know they work at the state hospital, this is great, we should have speed bumps everywhere in the city." And so, part of my message is, we can't look at these things in isolation. If you have a speed bump, where you expect cars to slow down, it's too late, right? You hit the first speed bump at 40 miles an hour, and then 200 feet later, you're going really slow with a pedestrian on your hood. So, we need to think about these things as a complete system. You know, and a perfect example of this is Elm Street. The very first improvement that Smith College made by Paradise Road was a diversion of the road and the speed hump. That's not about making that crosswalk safe, almost nobody uses that crosswalk. That's about slowing the speed of cars, so that I get to where there were two fatalities in front of now the campus center, the cars are going slower. So, that's part of the system. It's, don't start where you want cars to slow down, start where you want them to. So, you can think about what we're doing right now in Pleasant Street, we're spending $2.9 million, about a million of that is on the street. 1.9 is buried underground, so that's less obvious, but the million dollars is what you see that's out there. And we thought of this entire system. So, we looked at zoning, because we know that people drive slower when you have land use up to the street, when it's more vibrant. We looked at parks, we looked at landscaping. The roundabout down at Con Street is part of the overall piece, right? This roundabout's not in isolation, it's not one solution. The roundabout is the beginning of pedestrian safe, Pleasant Street and Con Street. So, this is the start of the system, and it was deliberately done. This is the start of knowing we want a gateway into downtown. And so, then we did a series of steps. So, from Hockam into Holyoke Street, we did a road diet, so we have already narrowed the road by about 10 feet. We put, these are called cycle tracks, they're elevated bike lanes. So, the bike lanes are six inches higher than the road, so there's a physical separation between the cars and the bike lane. What you don't see yet, I think they're going to do within the next few days, I think maybe on Monday, is the striping. So, on Pleasant Street, we're adding another row of parked cars on the west side of Pleasant Street between Hockam and Holyoke Street. So, that will lower, that area that used to be almost a 30-foot wide profile is going to be 21 feet wide. So, cars, so, we want people to park in those parking spots, because we want to narrow the street. Again, one of the most effective ways to slow the speed of a road isn't just the vertical deflections like speed humps, it's the horizontal narrowing. We know that really works effectively. So, again, I hope that people use these cycle tracks. In some ways, they're attached to the city's first cycle tracks, they've been in Cambridge for 15 years. Boston has a few of them, but they're still relatively new in Massachusetts. I hope they work, but even if they're not used by bicycles, they're important to narrow the street. Again, these are deliberately done before Holyoke Street, because Holyoke is when the pedestrian traffic really begins, right? So, you have a crosswalk down by where A&amp;W used to be, by the Public Health Building, that few people use, but it's really by Holyoke Street, you start getting a lot of pedestrian traffic. And so, everything we've done up until this point in my slides is to slow traffic down where the first person is actually crossing the street. So, then we did a series of things, again, as part of a story, at Holyoke and Pleasant, at Short and Pleasant, we have curb extensions. This narrows the street profile down to 21 feet, to 10 and a half foot lanes. And these are aggressive. What I want to say is, what we've done for a long time is sidewalks that are really great, we're adding extra stuff, but at some point, to really slow down the speed of cars, we have to be taking away some real estate from the cars. So, you know, we've already heard people saying, "Oh, I'm nervous about going through here in my truck, it's a hard turn to make." And it's true, if you're coming down here and turning right in a truck, it's going to be a much slower speed turn. And even if you're in a car, turning right is a slower speed turn, but that's a good thing. I, sometimes, when there's nobody around, this is just a test, I see, how fast can I go around and turn into a street without slowing down? And on many of our streets in town, you can go 25 miles an hour without slowing down, without leaving your lane. You shouldn't be making a 90-degree turn at 25 miles an hour, right? We want cars to slow down. There's magic numbers people use, but if you get hit by a car at 20 miles an hour, you're probably going to live, if you get hit by a car at 30 miles an hour, you're probably going to die, right? So, you're making a blind curve, 90 degrees, at an intersection with lots of pedestrian traffic, that's the place we want to slow down. So, curb extensions do this. We also have raised crosswalks here. I want to be clear, these are not speed bumps. Pleasant Street is an emergency route, we don't want trucks to bottom out. So, you can go over these raised crosswalks at a pretty fast rate of speed, it's not like a speed bump. But what it does do is, again, sends a message that this is, the pedestrians own this, not the cars. Doesn't mean pedestrians shouldn't be looking where they're doing, but it sends a clear message to the cars, pedestrians live here. And also, frankly, everybody is suddenly six inches taller, so you're much more visible. As the father of a five-foot year old, five-foot daughter, I really like her now being 5'6", when she crosses one of these streets. So, it makes a big difference how far down that person's visible. So, we have these raised crosswalks, and then, so raised crosswalk here, and then this is still under construction, these slides, so all the line paintings aren't down here yet. And then this is where the bike path crosses, this is the most aggressive. So, the entire thing is a raised table or raised intersection. So, instead of just being a crosswalk, a six-foot wide crosswalk, we've raised the entire intersection, we're allowing bicycles to cross at a 45-degree angle. So, it used to be bicycles come out of the bike path, would zip, pick up speed coming out of the bike path, and zoom right into Pleasant Street, and having some near crashes. There's now a granite block, so it's not just cars are trying to slow down sometimes, it's bicycles. We don't want the bicycles to rush right in, we want them to have to make a 45-degree turn and go through the intersection, again, make things, you know, safer in the whole process. So, think about how these things all fit together. That's sort of what we're trying to do with the plan, is have this whole story. So, the plan has sort of three elements, if you will. The one which for the public got most involved is identifies a lot of projects in town. These aren't necessarily priority projects, so in the order tonight, or specifically saying, you don't necessarily approve any project, these are projects that seem to make sense, they shouldn't necessarily be in this priority, but it helps us think about, what do we need? This priority list has already brought in $400,000 to the city. So, the reason of the money we have in Pleasant Street, the first grant we got was $400,000 for Complete Streets Grant. We got that money because you had to do a transition plan. Everybody else applied for mass dot money for a transition plan. We had this plan, so we used this for our transition plan. And that gave us $400,000, we'd be, you know. So, we've, this plan's already paid for itself four times over, even though it was all grant money. So, this will help, you know, inform the process, DPW is going through a more extensive process now, looking at sidewalks, there's lots of other neighborhood meetings, so this is just one source of projects. The other part of this plan is, we know that we need to look at Main Street in detail. So, it used to be, if I came before you 10 years ago, I would have held my head up high and said, "This is great, we have one of the highest pedestrian use downtowns in the Commonwealth, certainly west of Route 128, and we have very little crashes. The state does the 100 highest crash rate, nothing showed up on the list." Then the state changed their methodology. They said, "We're not just going to look at intersections, we're going to look at crash clusters." And we went from not being the top 100 to being the sixth worst crash cluster in the Commonwealth. So, lots of crashes on Main, basically from Smith College to downtown and Pleasant Street down a couple of blocks. Lots of crashes and no one intersection, spread around. It was a wake-up call to us. If you ask anybody outside Northampton, what are the challenges on Main Street, is that we have an incredibly wide Main Street? Now, we've trained the drivers to stop for cars, we have land use patterns that encourage that, but nonetheless, we have a lot of exposed distance for pedestrians that's through there. And so, rethinking Main Street was part of what we're doing here in the process. And then, the plan that you may be most interested in is, we have a series of goals, objectives, strategies and actions. And that's sort of the heart of the plan, that's what we hope, the chapter one of the plan, if you have it in front of you, is what we hope to lift out of the plan and bring into sustainable Northampton. Again, there'll be more public process next year. I should say, and so, we had a separate grant, we had one grant that paid for the plan, a public health group, and a second grant that just paid for community participation outreach. So, we're able to do more community participation outreach than we almost ever do for other plans, because we had this grant, it was out there. And so, I'm just going to walk you through very quickly the six goal areas, I won't go in more detail than that, but these goals are basically what we have in sustainable Northampton today, is just a little more detail about them. So, the first is, we want to have safe and efficient transportation of goods and people, right? In all forms, right? So, this is about bikes and peds, but it's not about bikes and peds at the expense of cars. Yes, on Pleasant Street, we want cars to go a little bit slower, but one of our basic goals is, we don't want to create the toothpaste issue, where we say narrow Pleasant Street so much that cars cut through the neighborhood traffic. So, we're very much saying, how do we slow the speed of traffic without creating new problems elsewhere? So, we want to accommodate bicycles and pedestrians, but we still want life to be good for people. We know that 65% of us drive to work in single occupancy vehicles, right? That is incredibly high for Boston, New York, but it's incredibly low. It's a great number for cities of 30,000. So, even though we're not a Boston, New York number, we should be proud of the 65%. But we have to accommodate that 65%, that's a real part of, how do we accommodate all those different pieces? So, then, within that, the second goal is, how do we make our system work better for bicycles and pedestrians, right? My 93-year-old mother is not going to walk anywhere, right? If she can walk 100 feet, I'm proud of her. Walking and biking should be a choice, but there are people in many parts of the world, many parts of this, even the city, who drive because they're not comfortable walking. And that's the people we want to switch, the person who's willing. There's a magic number the planners use, that says, "Most people will walk 4/10 of a mile." And beyond 4/10 of a mile, they're going to drive, below 4/10 of a mile, they're going to walk. Shows up a lot in the planning literature, except it's really not true. Because there are cities, I did a project once in Virginia Beach, where the street was 12 lanes wide, and people would get in their car to cross the street, literally, going 100 feet across the street, and they'd get in their car because it's too unsafe, right? There's other places where it's a beautiful tree-lined street, you know, go to Amsterdam, beautiful tree-lined streets with canals, and you walk three miles before you even notice it. So, part of being bike and pet friendly is thinking about that 4/10 of a mile, but it's also thinking about, what are the little things to make you be willing to walk a little bit further and fool you? We don't, I teach at UMass part-time, and one of the assignments I always give my students is, I give them a walking path through downtown that's 7/10 of a mile, and a walking path up King Street that's 7/10 of a mile, and I ask, "Which feels longer?" And not surprisingly, everyone says, "Oh, King Street must be twice as long." Before, they could look it up on Google Earth, they always said, "Oh, King Street is twice as long." Now, they say it feels like it, but of course, it's not. How do we make people feel like they can walk? Public transit, you had some discussion of that with Susan when you were talking about the budget, how do you make public transit work more? This isn't just about the funding, because we're not really dealing with the funding it, but it's about thinking about where bus stops are, right? We do have a lot of say on where the bus stops are. Do we make buses go into Stop &amp; Shop, or is it worth having a pull-off on King Street in front of Stop &amp; Shop, which means the bus doesn't have to drive as far, that means the bus can go faster? So, thinking about those kinds of things are within our control. Think about, how do we get federal and state investors? I think we're good at getting grants, but we're also involved at the political level of getting more money and more goodies, the mayor's our representative on the Metropolitan Organization, which divides up money in 43 cities and towns, and so, that's an important part of our process. How do we think about bicycle and vehicle parking? I'm bike, pet advocate, probably second to none, but I think car parking is really important. I'm not one of the people that thinks we should get rid of car parking downtown. I am someone who wants to encourage us to park once, and then make downtown friendly enough to walk, that you don't, if you're going both to City Hall and Post Office, you know, so I feel like you need to move the car between those things. For example, on Friday night, when there's no parking downtown, you can park in Smith College parking garage for free, and it's always available parking. How do we send out that message that people can park there? So, thinking about both physical improvements and, you know, soft improvements. The mayor commissioned the Walker Parking Study a couple of years ago, and that's part of what Walker talked about, is both supply, but also, you know, everything else in the entire system. And then, how do we use education, encouragement, enforcement, evaluation? It's an entire system, right? There's four Es we talk about for transportation, enforcement, education, encouragement and engineering, and they're all important. Engineering, we often focus on the most, but they're all important. You've all seen the Wayfinding Sign Program we've done around the city, that's part of our encouragement effort. So, when someone walks their dog, they say, "Oh, it's only a third of a mile to get somewhere, maybe next time I'll walk it." And so, that's sort of the, that's the overall, big-picture story.
Oh, thank you. Okay, I'll, oh, Counsel O'Donnell.
I would also add, Director Fiden presented this in the Transportation and Parking Commission, which also voted to endorse it, and I appreciate it. It's kind of hard to break apart your entire presentation, because it spans a lot, there's lots of different components, but to try and discuss it, I'll pick up on what you said about speed bumps, which I absolutely agree with, and it's one reason why your voice is so valuable on the Transportation and Parking Commission, since those issues come up constantly there. It's just that if you want to tackle that issue, for example, traffic and speed, what we see in the plan before us is harder, takes more money, takes more thought, than just putting down asphalt to build a speed bump. But that's why, that's why I admire it, and I have to really thank you for, not just bringing best practices and research, but also your practical experience, especially locally in Northampton, and all the public process that went into this. So, it's a very impressive document, but also, everything that went into it before the document was produced is something I think people should be proud of in the city. So, yeah, I look forward to endorsing it tonight as a full counsel, so.
Counsel Bidwell?
I can't remember if we talked about this when you did your presentation, your resources, but...[1732.32] And this is probably another discussion for another day, but I've been thinking a lot more about driverless cars, it's not 20 years down the road, it's, and it could fundamentally change our thinking about so much of this, including parking troubles. So, I realize that's kind of beyond the scope, but that must be on your mind, as you think about all this.
Yeah, and, you know, I go to conferences with futurists out there, and there's two totally different versions that are out there. One is it creates unlimited sprawl, and the other is great, and then let's, so we don't really know where it's gonna go, but certainly, we talk about it. I mean, I am someone, I'm someone who rarely believes in parking garages, I've done a lot of projects in a lot of cities, and every city, even the dead ones, think they need a parking garage. I generally don't agree. I actually think we probably do need another parking garage, but I can see us doing a parking garage that's flat decks, that could be converted later through whatever demand or bid loss. So, yeah, absolutely, thinking about that is important, because your idea is coming in some form or another.
Councilor LeBarge?
Yeah, Wayne, I want to thank you, and for the subcommittee also, and with all your knowledge that you have, and how our city is really, really changing, and it's for the safety of everybody in our city. And also, just reading about 300 public participants who engaged with this planning process, that's what people want. They want the transparency, be able to form and be involved with any type of movement that's occurring here in the city, and I want to thank you for this.
The, uh, the thing that I find most heartening about this is, of course, is the holistic perspective and analysis. I mean, I, you know, as Transportation and Parking Committee evolved from, originally from the Parking Commission, and then became Transportation and Parking, and now more transportation, it's actually now become more of an avenue for neighborhoods to ask for corrective systems for speed digesting principally. And it, the hope when we established Transportation Parking Commission was to provide that holistic systemic analysis, the toothpaste syndrome that you described, that, you know, you digest speed on one road, it's not like what that will do is force other people to make something that was normally a secondary avenue is suddenly a primary, and then we have to deal with that one. And that was the hope of the Transportation Parking Commission, ultimately. Unfortunately, it hasn't, it's now kind of become something else. It's become a complaint bureau, and where people queue up for, neighborhoods queue up for some type of mitigation without a sense of the consequences that it has larger, in a larger sense. That's why this is heartening to me, insofar as if we have a grand overview, and a systemic overview on how we manage and control, usually it's perception, as you point out. It's more of an issue of perception. If 25 mile an hour speed on a smaller digested street seems faster than it would on a wider Boulevard, Prospect Street being a perfect example, where that type of digesting, that basically creating psychological landscapes that actually inspire people consciously or unconsciously to drive more thoughtfully and safely. And I much prefer that. To be honest, I'm not a big speed bump fan, I think, I mean, you know, I know that in California, of course, where they got to design everything on a grid, and alphabetize all their streets, or do them numerically, you have your primaries, and in all secondary neighborhood streets are every other intersection's a four-way stop, and then in between, there's a speed bump, and everyone drives very slowly down those streets, but they only drive down those streets to get to their homes, they rarely use them as a shortcut, and consequently, their primaries are clogged up, and lots of frustration comes with it. So, and we, and our roads were not designed on a grid, clearly. Ours were designed by the Y Ching or something, or random decisions, or goats, whatever. So, consequently, we run into issues where we have to actually acquire some land in order to create a right-angle turn on, up in Leeds, right? So, because something that made sense once upon a time when it was a dirt road does not make any sense anymore. You see the same problem where the roundabout's scheduled to go on North King Street, there's this weird angle, that we have the weird intersection on King Street by Dunkin' Donuts. And that's not really an intersection, or is it an intersection, and no one really knows. So, another phenomenon that I find out, that I realize, and one of the reasons the roundabouts are such a success, and four-way stops, is actually creates a sense of doubt. This doubt actually makes, inspires caution in people. Now, as far as I can tell, no one in Northampton knows how to use a four-way stop and knows how to properly go through it. But consequently, they're all stopping. They're all, there's, no one's bolting through the intersection, everyone's stopping going, "I don't know, is it my turn, I'll go," maybe, and there's a lot of hesitation, the same with the roundabout. And as such, the traffic speed, traffic behavior is modified, mollified. So, I have every intention of endorsing this, and as you said, there are a few items that I would take issue with, but I'm not the last one in this, and I'm certainly prepared to be more educated as this goes further. But I, I think that every time that we've come up with a visioning plan, and this type of process, which some people roll their eyes at, is all been to the good. It has all benefited us in a larger sense, that we can only appreciate when Wayne periodically comes in and gives us a throwback on the way, you know, throwback to a time before, when we look at it, and we thought we were so brilliant then, and it actually makes, and things that we take for granted now didn't magically occur, they were part of a process, a larger process, and a community process, a transparent process, as Councilor LeBarge said, and best practices, as Councilor LeBarge said. So, I'm gung-ho on this.
Councilor Bidwell?
Just one quick point that we discussed when this was a community resource, and that is, even though we're not gonna have a new comprehensive plan for another year, whatever, whatever the process turns out to be, once this is adopted for Planning Board purpose, this does become part of the comprehensive plan, is that correct? Just so we know, there is some real significance to our vote, not just vision.
Well, so Planning Board's already adopted this, so that's what brought that...
That's already in effect, okay.
Right, so what he's talking about is, in the special permit criteria and site plan approval criteria, one of the criteria is conformance with cities' comprehensive plans. So, if someone's doing a big project, a project above a certain threshold, then yes, these standards do apply.
And it should be noted that, as in all things, they are malleable and modifiable as circumstances call for, so it doesn't become permanently etched, so that we're trapped into stuff, the whole idea is to facilitate best practices and a continuum, so. Any other comments or questions? Okay.
Hello.
Uh, Council Nash?
I'm going to endorse this, even though I'm not completely a believer. For example, like, we've already had a discussion about, we're doing a road diet on Pleasant Street, you know, and we're putting in some needed parking, parallel parking spaces. My mind can't figure it all fitting. Wayne tells me it's gonna fit, so I'm gonna go on faith that, once the lines go in, and I'm looking forward to this, in the next week to see that, and, but that, you know, often with these plans, you know, with the roundabouts, with this road diet, with the cycle tracks, you know, the, are there gonna be more cycle tracks going down? So, that's...
So, the, so with your vote, the city took over Pleasant Street from Holyoke to Hockaman Road. Part of this original deal that got the roundabout in, is that the state is going through the process of surplusing the rest of Pleasant Street, going all the way down to the interstate or down to Dyke Road, and that will, assuming you all vote for it, that will eventually become a city road, and at that point, we should have that conversation. I think it'd be great to go down to Pleasant Street, to Collins', but we haven't done that yet.
But there is some faith that's required here, of like, "Yeah, all right, we'll see what happens," and so far, it keeps working out, so I will vote yes.
Yeah, to that point, obviously, there's resistance to anything that's perceived as a significant change. The roundabout by Look Park, of course, being the most demonstrative of that issue, that there was a lot of initial opposition for a variety of reasons, things like, the engineer has never considered snowplows or school buses, which actually wasn't true, but, or, but there was a protest, there were protests. There were resistance, it's also disruptive when they're being assembled, then went to Pleasant Street, there's been complaints about Pleasant Street because of the disruption to traffic, certainly about the roundabout, there was complaints associated with that, and that does come. And we will hear that as councillors, we're going to hear as these modifications occur, that there will be concerns expressed, I think we should be prepared to explain them and understand them, or the complaints, and then also be prepared to explain what is being considered here. And that said, I mean, that's the tougher part of our job, is basically, we're the firewall, we're supposed to hear the concerns, even express them on councillors, for instance, like, Council Nash is concerned about physics, how you can make two things occupy the same space at the same time. We'll see, we'll see. Apparently, striping is the magic, so we'll see. But it is a leap of faith.
And I just want to add, so, we're talking about traffic safety, but this covers other areas. So, you know, to Council Murphy's point about property tax, so, I don't claim all the credit for this, for Pleasant Street, but, you know, breaking property has changed hands twice in the last year, and it went up substantially in value between the first sale and the second sale. And I think to some extent, it's this investment in Pleasant Street is making people say there's more valuable opportunities. So, this should also be about getting more investment in Pleasant Street, both in terms of affordable housing, and market rate housing, and commercial development, which is good for us for taxes, and good for us as a community. So, you know, this goes back to thinking as a city.
Any other comments or discussion on this? Okay, so this is, this will be a roll-call vote to endorse by order the Walk-Bike Northampton Citywide Pedestrian and Bicycle Comprehensive Plan, which will soon be reduced to an acronym, I'm sure. So, take it away, John.
Councilor Klein?
Yes.
Councilor LeBarge?
Yes.
Councilor Murphy?
I'm gonna abstain until I read it.
Councilor Nash?
Yes.
Councilor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councilor Shara?
Yes.
Councilor Bidwell?
Yes.
Councilor Carney?
Yes.
Councilor Dwight?
Yes, so that passes with eight in favor, one abstention. Okay, so that's first reading, we'll revisit this, actually, on 7th, on September 7th at our next meeting. Okay, we're up to item 17.368, this is in order accepting Lot 4, Old Street and Village Hill for the municipal and other purposes, first reading. Motion and second there, so. And this, this was discussed in, excuse me, in finance, right? Okay. This one was discussed in finance, but, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
And came with a positive recommendation. Came with a positive recommendation, it's been so long, so I'm sorry. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, John, roll-call please.
Councilor LeBarge?
Yes.
Councilor Murphy?
Yes.
Councilor Nash?
Yes.
Councilor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councilor Shara?
Yes.
Councilor Bidwell?
Yes.
Councilor Carney?
Yes.
Councilor Dwight?
Yes.
Councilor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, that passes in first reading, and the second reading will be September 7th. Item 17.369 is in order authorizing the purchase of 55 acres on East Hampton Road, Route 10, and on Old Wilson Road for conservation, municipal, and/or other purposes.
Move to perp. Second.
Is it second?
Second.
Uh, Council Klein, second, okay. Further discussion on this? Council Murphy?
Yeah, I'd like to continue to opine on this for a minute, since we're being talking in this evening.
Well, oh, yeah.
And, and in addition to the planning director, I too have been around for a long time. And I remember when we created the concept of the office park, because we look at the fact that we're about 21% commercial, and more commercial relieves pressure on residential tax rate, and this was an area where we thought we'd grow, so we created it as an office park. Part, part of its potential to develop it as an office park was to put a sewer line out there, because there is no sewer line out there, and it could never be an office park without a sewer line. But, we never put a sewer line out there. I don't even think we tried very hard to put a sewer line out there. So, that never really became viable. I also remember when we did our vernal pool zoning, and when we did that, we spoke about the fact that it was gonna have tremendous impact on the very parcel that we're taking tonight. So, I completely agree that it's not worth $600,000 anymore, but to a great extent, it was either our inactivity or what we did do that took the value away, and it is sort of a fait accompli, that it's now turning into a wildlife quarter, because that talk has been around for many years, that Chuck said we'd make a nice wildlife quarter. My concern is, and I have no doubt we're going to vote to buy it and turn it into the wildlife quarter that many intended it should always be, but we don't have a lot of places to diversify our tax base. And I just continue to be concerned that if we don't do that, or do something to mitigate our tax rate, that it's gonna be hard to get overrides when we need overrides, and that what we're gonna do is create a real wonderful city that you gotta be rich to live in, because the cost per thousand is gonna go up to the point where the average person isn't gonna be able to live here. I mean, we already look at the fact that it's hard for our schoolteachers, our firefighters, and our police officers to live in this community, and it's only gonna get worse, both, in this case, by not permitting development there, and then on top of it, to whack $14,000 off the tax rolls. And a lot of that value went away, because we didn't do what we were gonna do originally, and we just haven't, we haven't been trying to truly create opportunity to develop commercially to offset our tax base. I know one of these pieces, the O'Brien piece, I tried very hard to sell for a while, and you couldn't, because having to put a septic system is unrealistic to run a sewer line in East Hampton. The wet, there were some wet ones, too much so to put up a building in a septic system, so it's undevelopable. And they basically said, "Okay, we'll sell it for what we can get to the city of Northampton for conservation land." So, we truly, I mean, I have no doubt we're gonna buy this tonight, and I'll probably point this out again in the future, I just don't see in the long run, I have a very long-term perspective on Northampton, do not want to see us become the kind of place where you gotta have a six-figure income to live and survive, unless you live in something that's subsidized. And that's really the direction we're going in. So, I shall leave it at that.
Councilor Bidwell?
I very much agree, and share the concern, that we just have largely run out of commercially developable space, and that has implications for our tax base and the distribution between residential and commercial tax, and I too worry about that. However, going back to the days when Terry Anderson was Economic Development Director and looking at this site, it seemed like it always had four or five strikes against it, and it was just never, this was never gonna be our solution. If it wasn't, if it wasn't lack of sewer, it was the slopes. It wasn't the slopes, it was the vernal pools. It wasn't the vernal pools, it was the complications in assembling these diverse ownership apartments. So, I, I share the concern, but I never, I don't think I ever really thought this was gonna be the solution. So, I don't have too much difficulty in officially declaring the vision of a business park, an office park down there dead, because I never thought it was gonna be, for the record.
You are, you want to speak to this?
I guess as the sponsor, I just want to add also that, you know, I've been involved in the whole discussion about the business park, and it's a policy question, so would we spend, how many millions and millions of dollars would we spend to essentially put in a sewer system for three property owners? Would we recoup the $14,000? We'd probably end up spending way more than the $14,000. Many, many developers in the city pay to put in infrastructure if a project is viable. So, I hear what you're saying, and I'm, and believe me, we stuck with this plan for a long, long time, but it is true, the elevations, the driveways, we had five colleges look at it, to look at building, they wanted to build their storage facility there, but...
How long a driveway did you have to, you have to build a really long driveway just to get to the flat part? It's a really difficult site to develop. So, I hear what you're saying completely, councillor, and I, believe me, no one wants to increase the commercial tax base more than I do. I just think that there's also a thing which I know you respect, which is the free market, and if these were really, you know, properties that could be developed, someone would have either paid for the infrastructure, or there would have been developers coming for, or businesses coming forward saying, "We want to relocate there," and we could apply for grants to try to get that infrastructure. So, and then the only other thing I want to say is, we also, it also fell into, you know, a lot of development and infrastructure went up to Hospital Hill, which you know, so a lot of grant money went up there as well. So, I know that was one of the other issues. So, anyway, I just wanted to, I take the councillor's point, but I also believe that if these were the properties that you're ascribing to them, they would have sold easily, and we would have found the grant money for the infrastructure, and so that's, you have to balance it out a little bit.
And just to reply to that, it's not three properties. The sewer does not cross the Mill River diversion, so it's Richard's Plumbing, it's the Cyril's property, which will be developed at some point in time, it's where the tractor supply place, it's the mini mart, it's Philip's Enterprises, which has been hampered, because they have septic systems there. It's Mr. Thompson's land on the other side, it's where the fuel tank is, it's where the recyclers are, it's where Wayside Auto Body is, it's where, there's a building on the other side of the bike, I mean, there's, it's not three properties. It's a corridor that currently has commercial development, has the potential for some more, that is handicapped, because it doesn't have the sewer line, and, you know, I agree, a And, you know, when that is done and completely built out, I'd like to do a little economic analysis and compare what it costs to host the residential's to what we're making on the commercials, because we, we changed that plan several times as we went along. But that, that's a story for another day. But there, there are more than three properties down there that would have benefited from the sewer line, no doubt. And none of them, or even several of them, could have ever afforded to fund the cost of a sewer line over there. That really had to be something that we did in coordination with East Hampton to bring that along, so.
So, and, and I think the, so far as I understand, the gist of your argument is that not so much this particular plot, but it's the camel's nose under the tent, and/or that it's something that signals that there's less likely to be developed a sewer line?
Well, we took it, we basically, you know, because now for what remains, it's unlikely we'll spend the money to do that. So, you know, we are, we are taking it, we made a case that, well, they're valued, they're not worth what they're taxed at. We had something to do with that. And so it does make it sort of a fait accompli.
Can I ask for clarification on those points? So the, all of the different businesses that you just talked about, where exactly are they in relation to this piece of the property?
They're before, they're between the diversion bridge, right after what used to be the auto dealer that now?
K-Lanes.
Yeah. From there to the bike path bridge, these properties basically are more or less after that. But between the South Street Bridge and the Bike Path Bridge, those properties are there and don't have sewer either.
So the, the property is being addressed here is near the Sunnyside?
We're on the other side of the, you know, between Bike Path Bridge and
opposite, the recycling.
Sunny, whatever they call it.
Sunny Side.
Yeah, Sunny Side, yeah. So further down the road. And I think actually, Sunnyside pumps to East Hampton. They go the other way.
I think you're right.
Yeah, they pump.
Any other comments or discussion and debate? Counselor O'Donnell?
Just, you know, the other, the other side, to the good points Counselor Murphy raises is, I mean, the financial pressures of the city of Northampton and every other city, I don't think you could say fairly that you could solve all of them with unlimited commercial development. And we decided to debate about a single payer healthcare. Healthcare costs go up and up and up all the time. I would say that's a larger driver of, of, of costs. And I wouldn't expect you could make it up with commercial development exclusively.
I'm ready to acquiesce, that the die is sort of cast on this one. But I, you know, this may appear again, and
I'm just debating your point.
Yeah. This may appear again, and
It's the opposite of the die being cast, because I'm debating what you raised.
The die is sort of cast on this one, but if it comes up again, it comes up again.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion on this? John, roll call, please.
Counselor Murphy?
No.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Passes in first reading, eight in favor, one opposed. I will be, a second reading on September 7th. The next item is 17.346. This is an order to approve a deed from the city to Rebecca J. Duggan and John P. Duggan, Jr. This is second reading, accept them. Counselor Labarge, you want to recuse yourself? Counselor Labarge will be recusing herself from this discussion and vote. So is there a motion?
Move to second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Okay. That passes in second reading. It's safe to come in, there, okay, there we go. Counselor Labarge, get back on our seat. Item, thank you. Item 17.347, this is an order to authorize the purchase of land at the intersection of Leonard Street and Haydenville Road, second reading.
Approve.
Second.
Motion's made by Counselor Bidwell, second by Counselor Klein. Any further discussion on this? This is also part of, actually part of the walk-bike plan, actually. Okay, roll call, please.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes. Still, Murphy.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
You go twice. You did, divided vote. Okay, that passes in second reading. Item 17.359, this is an order to authorize the acquisition by purchase gift or eminent domain of a storm drain easement. Second reading.
Move to perp.
Counselor Labarge has made a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Counselor Shara, seconds is, seconds is, holy cats. Your Honor, you have an update on this?
I do, I do, actually. It's a breaking, breaking news. At 5:30 PM this afternoon, I sat with Mr. Willard at his kitchen table, and we signed an agreement. So we have an agreement that gets us through this process. And essentially, the agreement is that we will, we will be acquiring the easement from Mr. Willard, the easement that we need for the storm water work. And in exchange, instead of, instead of a cash purchase, we will be designing and installing a, a new sewer connection.
A proper sewer connection.
And so we, and then we will be, I'll actually be coming back to you, because we will also then be granting him an easement in our, basically on Holyoke Street for his new sewer line. And so we have worked that out. It took us a while, and I had a couple of different meetings with him, attorneys spoke, the building commissioner, I was part of it, DPW Director Donald Lascalia was part of it. And so we've come to an agreement, like I said, at 5:30 PM this evening. So what I, I would ask you to vote yes on this second reading. The other, the part of the agreement is that we will be executing a friendly taking. So we will still acquire the easement through a, through eminent domain, but it's a so-called friendly taking, meaning that he signed an agreement, knowing that we would do that. And the reason for this, and for Counselors who've been involved in takings where we've done other easements, or where we've done bicycles, or we've done whatever it is, if we have a choice between a purchase or a friendly taking, the friendly taking cleans the title completely. And so if there's some remnant of something, 1800s, it, it completely clears the title. So from Allen's perspective, it's a, it's a much better way to do it. And so, so when you do vote on this, I am going to ask you to sign the order of taking. But again, I have a signed agreement with him, we have agreement between the attorneys, and we're going to be, we've already begun the initial design work for his sewer system.
Well, okay, then a procedural question.
Yes.
No, I know, this is not the thing.
Yeah.
But as a procedural, would that require for us to sign the eminent domain?
Yeah.
The friendly, not, the friendly taking as opposed to adverse taking? Does that require a discussion and a vote?
No, you're, what you're, you're voting tonight to authorize the eminent domain.
Right.
So you're, you're, as one of the three options.
So, right, that's right. Purchase gift or eminent domain.
Yes. So you're authorizing that it be, that it be acquired through one of those three means.
So
The next act that you would have to take would be, there's an, there's an order of taking, which has all of your signatures on it. And so the next decision point would be, do six of you want to sign it? So to finalize the deal. And again, I can, I, I have the, you know, I have a signed agreement and, you know, between the, between the two parties, and it does stipulate that we will acquire, you know, the transfer must take place on or before September 1st. The city shall have the sole discretion as to whether to take the drainage easement by friendly eminent domain or by deed. And then, you know, it just goes on to say that it has all the usual disclaimer language for friendly takings.
Another question is that, were there any modifications on the original proposed easement about 30 feet?
None whatsoever. It's the same exact
Dimensional, same, okay.
No, it's the 30-foot easement. There's no change. It's just, you know, a different road to Dublin, as they say. Because we, you know, we were attempting to purchase it, and, and he wanted, he was more focused on the sewer issue.
Does this clear Mr. Willard of any liability, extent, current liability that he may hold by the unauthorized connection on?
Well, at this point, the connection's going to be cut in three weeks, because the, the contractor will be moving in to begin deconditioning the storm sewer line. And so it's going to be cut, and he's, you know, we're going to be capping it, and we'll be, the agreement also stipulates that we will be providing alternative sanitary facilities during the construction process. So we will be working with him to bring in a porta potty, so he'll have facilities, which he's required to have as a business. He's fine with that, that's part of the agreement. So, yeah.
But my question is, he's not subject to any retroactive liability for, for the 50, 60-some on years that
Not with the city, that I'm, the city's certainly not exercising anything.
Okay.
There's no, yeah.
I wanted some clarity on that.
Yep, no.
So the city's not acting on that, that's okay.
Yep, nope, there's, it's, it's a very basic document, so.
Okay.
So regarding the, the order for the taking, you said, the contract says by September 1st. So we, so we can't really wait till the September meeting?
We
No. We really need
Six signatures on the order tonight.
The fact that you're all in one room is why I'd want you to sign it tonight.
Yeah.
Just because it's easier to get you all to sign it. And again, it's, yeah, I know that Counselor Nash also happened to chat with Mr. Willard this afternoon, like around 6 o'clock, so I don't know
Right after, right after your late breaking news, I contacted him on the way in, because I had already, I mean, there's been a lot of outreach, but on my part, but especially by the mayor and his staff to come to some sort of agreement here. And I'm really glad that tonight there's an agreement on the table, and, and I'm happy to report that Mr. Willard is pleased with, with the agreement. And, and so therefore, I'm going to be voting yes on this. I, I was a little wary of, of voting against, you know, a taking for a constituent, and, but now that this has been negotiated, I'm feeling good about this. So everything the mayor is reporting is true.
Thank goodness for that.
Except I don't have anything in writing.
Well, you, okay, any other discussion on this item? Roll call on this, please, John.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
That passes unanimously in second reading, and the mayor would be passing that around at the end of the meeting for, well, I guess we, the enrollment committees have to sign a bunch of stuff anyway, so that'll, all the remaining counselors can take some time just signing this as well. There you go. Okay. And now we move into ordinances. And this is item 17.331. This is an ordinance to amend Chapter 312-110 regarding the Roundhouse parking lot. Second reading, motions made by Counsel Labarge.
Second.
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 Counsel Klein, second, and Counsel Shara. Crazy seconding. Any further discussion on this item? Take it away, John.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
All right, that passes in second reading. The next item we're addressing is item 17.3 dot 367. This is an ordinance to amend 156, 5A plus 5C to allow CBA oversight over some exempt projects and modify some exemptions. And this is for referral. There's, Counselor O'Donnell, you want to refer a bunch?
Can we just, can we refer all of them?
Yes.
But, well, the next two are to, well, first one is to legislative matters, the other one's to TPC and legislative matters.
Okay.
Why don't we do this one, and then we'll do the others as a group? How's that sound?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any discussion on the referral? Actually, was there a motion?
Move to second.
I'll move to refer, and this is second.
Oh, discussion, Community Resources has dealt zoning in the past.
You want to also refer to Community Resources?
I don't know. It's kind of, we've kind of been referring it to that committee sometimes, and other times not doing it, depending on whatever, so.
Except that is a motion.
But certainly, it's under jurisdiction.
Is that a motion? Second?
Community Resources.
Second.
All those in favor of amending to include a referral to Community Resources, please say aye.
Aye.
So that was a motion to add to the, to amend, and now we're back to the original order, which now is as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay. So that is referred as amended with two committees listed. So the request now is to have items 17.370, item 17.375, item 17.376, and also item 17.377, and also item 17.378, and also item 17.379, every damn thing left on the, but to move them as a group. And I will just read the headlines for that. Back up to 17.370. This is an ordinance to amend parking zone time limit class on Green Street. And then this is for referral to Transportation and Parking Commission and the unlegislative matters. Same referral for item 17.375, an ordinance relative to parking on Franklin Street. Also same referral, item 17.376, this is an ordinance relative to parking on Main Street. And then same referral for item 17.377, this is an ordinance relative to parking on Con Street. And then item 17.378, this is an ordinance relative to parking on Henshaw Avenue. And then lastly, item 17.379, an ordinance relative to parking on Prospect Street.
Move to refer the group. Move to refer the group.
Second.
Made to refer to this group and seconded. Any discussion on the referrals? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay. So, actually, updates, one of the updates is sitting on my left here. John Fry, actually, God bless him, stepped up here to help us out, and he had a little crash course, and we, and then his baptism by fire tonight. And I have to say how grateful I am that he is. And for people in the public, you probably know John Fry if you're standing at the pump, just sort of dazing while you're holding the pump handle, looking at the pump. You go, hey, well, there's John Fry, his name's on this. He, he autographs every, just, all the pumps in this area, just for fun.
So he's come out in the open.
He's come out in the open. Also, more importantly, he's also one of the original developers and fond, founders of the Hot Chocolate Run. Went back when like three people were running. And John would run in a polar bear. I never ran, yeah, I did run, actually, yes.
Yes.
John, you'll see, running in a polar bear, so, I mean, more to his credit. So once again, thank you very much, John, I really do appreciate that. And, and you did, you did a great job tonight, so I appreciate that. Counselor Nash?
Be filling in in the future, or?
He will be, he is serving on an interim basis, we don't want to burn him out though, but in the meantime, there is a job position that's been posted in Human Resources, if anyone's interested in the position. It's, the criteria is all laid out, if you go to the North Hampton City website and go to HR, then you can find the posting. So, yeah, because I don't think John would take this on his permanent job on a bet. Counselor Labarge?
Do we have to sign in?
Yeah, there's a couple of things in enrollment that you'll have to sign. So, with that, that comes to our final vote, do I need a motion though?
Motion to approve.
Motion's made and seconded, Counselor O'Donnell and Bidwell, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all very much, and we'll see you in September.